Good evening and welcome to the July 27, 2022, meeting of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Steven Spurr and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the deus and return it thereafter. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Chris Nicola is a city employee and the zoning board secretary. Mr. Nicola assists applicants with the preparation of their applications, planning our agendas and keeping our meeting minutes. Mr. Nicola also does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearing tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Mr. Nicola, will you please call the role of the members?
Certainly. Chairman Spurr?
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Yuko?
Here.
Ms. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Mullen?
Here.
Mr. Malley is excused. Mr. Loikitz?
Here.
Ms. Toth is also excused. Ms. Sager?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, you have a court. You can proceed.
Excellent. We generally hear the applications, the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some applications are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. Board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board professionals and board members have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not a time to tell us what you think about this application. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the interested public have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session where board members discuss the application and vote. You will be able to listen to the executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in our discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If an application requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your application to another date, and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must carefully, they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Luntz, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have it prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application as it will necessitate additional follow-up from zoning and other city staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the application. We have only one case here to be heard this evening. Before we begin that, if you'll join me, rise for the pleasure allegiance. The pleasure allegiance? Please be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm going to recognize we have a substitute. Oh, do you want to do that first? Sure. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Okay. Before we proceed, I just wanted to note for the record that Dr. Levine has read the entire transcript as an eligible and is eligible to vote on this matter.
Okay. Then we're going to recognize next our stand-in engineer, board professional. Andy is going to swear you in this evening.
Okay. You can just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? And please state your name, spell your last name.
Marie Raaffe, R-A-F-F, A-Y.
Thank you. And just can you briefly describe your background and experience?
Sure. I'm a civil engineer with Colliers Engineering. I've also been a member of my local planning board, so I've been representing boards throughout Bergen County for the past few years.
And licensed as an engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Cancel any questions before we get started?
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Weber, the floor is yours, barring any other procedural matters.
Oh, we're good.
That's enough? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, James Weber, Samantha Alfonso of Alfonso and Weber, on behalf of the applicant, STMB Properties LLC, on the project called Turkano Park. This is the third application hearing before the board. As the board may recall, there was a neighborhood meeting that was conducted by the Flanagan's. After that, there was a hearing at the Summit Community Center. At that time, there were questions that were posed by the various board members and by opposition to the application that were addressed in the subsequent plans. For example, the driveway was adjusted away from the promenade, satisfying the police captain's comment and satisfying the comments of Mr. Manoya, the owner of the promenade. Likewise, there were questions with regard to the rooftop act amenities, and those were addressed and resolved in terms of the lighting and the fencing with regard to that. So there has been the opportunity to listen to the board's comments and to the neighbors' comments, and that was at the last hearing in May that those were introduced. By way of refresher, what is up on the screen right now is the perspective of the Turkano Park. The island in the middle has been removed, and with the removal of that island, the variance associated with the sign there has been removed. As you can see, this is the three-story, 42-foot-tall building with 52 units, eight of which will be affordable housing. In terms of the height, the highest to the lowest exceeds that permitted. You're allowed 42 plus 5, or 47. We're at 51, and that's due to the topography of the site. With regard to the additional variances, there's an FAR variance, I believe, of approximately 112% in a zone that permits 75%. There's a building coverage variance as well, of approximately, I'd say, 39% or 30% permitted. And there's a standard in the NB zone for a building to be limited to 10,000 square feet per lot. This building is, if I recall correctly, 56,600 square feet, and as a result, it violates that standard. Again, that standard for the NB zone is something that all generates from the fact that the commercial use, which is required to be on the first floor, is being substituted for by residential use. We believe that that use variance assumes those additional variances that I've just discussed because the benefit to eliminating that commercial use will provide the justification to grant the variances associated with this full residential building. If we could go through the exhibits, just by way of refresher, this is the view of the Turkano Park from River Road and Morris Avenue, and I talked about the highest to lowest, and here's the example of that highest to lowest. As the topography slopes down toward River Road, you see that the height at that one spot, from the highest point to the lowest point, is at 51 feet. Likewise, you can see on the roof, the terrace, there's appurtenances. You're allowed to have eight feet, or you're allowed to have 15 feet in total appurtness height, but you can't be more than eight feet over that which is permitted. So you have 42 feet plus eight puts you at 50. We're at 57. There was a reduction in terms of the total area of the elevator appurtenance, if you will, or bulkhead, where it was at 490 square feet, and it's been reduced to 100 square feet. So just to reduce the amount that is in excess. If we could continue. Here is the view of the promenade. You can see Turkano Park in the background. It is understood that the average grade of height for Turkano is lower than the promenade. Next. And here are the exhibits that the board was particularly interested in seeing. These are the views of a perspective as seen from Plain Street, and I believe that, if I could use Carthick's first name?
Carthick.
Yeah, thank you. If I could use Carthick's first name, this comes from his backyard. On the left-hand side, you see the promenade. On the right-hand side, you see Turkano Park, and this is shown in springtime when it's leafed out. Can you see the next one? And here is the picture of the existing scenario, again, from Carthick's backyard, showing what is there currently. If you look on the left-hand side, at the end of the white fence, you see the structure that is for the physical training. That is around five feet off the rear lot line, and if you can recall the perspective we just looked at, that's going to be gone. You're going to have a setback between the Turkano, 44 feet to the side yard line. So you do get that opening. You're not getting that building right on the last, the closest lot line. Next.
I have a ski launch in there. There's a...
There was a winter boat up. There it is. And here's a picture of the perspective as shown in wintertime, and this is with the plantings of the eight-foot evergreens with the six-foot board-on-board fence. The board-on-board fence came as it generated by the neighbors saying they wanted a board-on-board fence, and as a result, the Flanagan's are proposing a board-on-board fence. If we can go a little bit further. One of the questions that was raised at the initial hearing was, how does this property compare in size to the four prominent buildings at the intersection of River Road and Morris Avenue? This is a picture of what is known as S3. It is the renovated building of Bristol Myers Swift. It's 112,000 square feet. Again, the proposal Turkano is 56,000 square feet. This is Sunrise. Sunrise is 60,000 square feet, a little bit more than what is proposed by Turkano. Then you would have the Smythe Bobble Building, which is at 40,000 square feet for two stories, the promenade at 52,000 square feet. So if you take the existing four and you include the Turkano, Turkano is right in the middle in terms of its size. We did look at the floor area ratio, but the circumstances were such that it's difficult to compare the FARs among the various buildings. For one, BMS has an area of 98,000 or 98 acres, so just a little bit of preparing apples and oranges. So as a result, we just stayed with the absolute square pros floor area of the buildings. Krista Anderson, this was in response to the comment of Mr. Snickers saying, does the mezzanine or the basement constitute a story in grade? That's been examined. Mr. Wury had presented a report for the benefit of review by DCS, and she agrees that it does not constitute a story above grade. Ms. Alfonso, this is within your particular knowledge, so if you would be so kind as to assume the deus and report to the board.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If I can, I have been in discussions with Mr. Michello, Joseph Michello, the fire inspector, about the fire chief's report, which I understand he assisted with originally. We've been in discussions since the last hearing, and he helped me find an appropriate fire protection engineer who has experience with garage stackers of this kind and creating a design sprinkler plan for car stackers, and he felt comfortable referring us to this fire protection engineer. The applicants have agreed to a condition, agreed to a condition with the board's acceptance, of course, that they would engage this particular fire protection engineer with experience with garage stackers and to have that design for the sprinkler system approved by the fire inspector and fire chief. And with that, he seemed to accept and approve of the application.
Got all that, Andy?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Alfonso?
So this is a proposal. This is just a copy of the proposal that I shared with Mr. Michello, and the applicants found acceptable.
Thank you.
Next document. This is a report by Alligator Acoustics where they took the data, the specifications, from the stackers and from the HVAC in the basement. It's offered here, if the board approves the application, as a condition, that the applicants will install a system consistent with what the acoustical engineer found acceptable. What he did was go through the report and say, yeah, it complies with all the standards in Summit and in the state, that it is going to work in that regard. And as a result, he's not here tonight, but we would offer that, this study that he did said it's based on these manufacturer specs, and as a result, we would agree to a condition that the board approves the application. They have to have those manufacturer specs or something substantially similar. We have provided those reports with the anticipation that we would be able to accelerate the presentation tonight so that, out of recognition for the board coming out on July 27, 2022, in the middle of summer to hear this application. So unless the board has any questions of me, I would recall Mr. Josh Wury to the stand to allow him to continue his testimony.
Maybe, Mr. Weber, just to give some folks some context as to what we can expect this evening, traffic and planning are the highlights, not to diminish the remainder of your testimony.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and then we hope to conclude this evening, understanding that you and the Flanagan's are likely eager to move this forward. Is that, that's the plan?
That's the plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So let's pause just momentarily. There were a number of questions that were addressed, and thank you very much for preparing these memorandums. Any questions perhaps for us or board professionals on any of the topics that were presented there?
Nothing from engineering.
Just regarding the various documents that were submitted, those have been submitted to the board for record. You have the July 26 proposal, I guess, the fire protection engineer. Is that something you submitted? I had not seen that.
You have to ask Ms. Alfonso.
No, sir, that's right. That is the last exhibit. It will be A21 in the Rock Box file and the stimulus.
Okay. And that's specifically providing a proposal to design something for the suppression, the appropriate suppression of the potential fire.
Yes, and then you have a copy, like a hard copy now?
No, I'm just making sure that that's clear for the board.
Maybe, Ms. Alfonso, would you just swing that microphone towards you, right there?
Thank you.
And you don't have to go anywhere. Catch you on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay.
And then the sound acoustic engineer, that's something that was submitted in order to address the cumulative sound effect, I guess, of the mechanisms that are operating in the basement and the HVAC equipment.
I can answer that one, and the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Just to that point, Mr. Weber, in summary, this particular product doesn't plan to exceed any of the other ordinances that are in place in Summit or at the state level when it comes to noise.
Correct.
Or comply, right?
Right. But in order to assure, and the Flanagan's wanted the board to be confident, that when they said, "We're not going to exceed it,"
Right.
"They went out and got the sound expert saying, 'This is what we're putting in. These are what we're putting in. Are we good?'" And he said, "Yes, you're good."
Confirmed it. Excellent. Thank you.
Just one last thing regarding the evolution of the project. I know you mentioned and tried to clarify the rooftop appurtenance reduction in size. It was reduced from 490 to 100 square feet? Is that right? Did I have that?
I'm pretty sure it's 490 down to 100.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check. Thank you.
It's subject to maybe 390, but it was that magnitude of reduction.
Right.
Although the height still remained the same, just the amount of the square footage of the elevator bulkhead was reduced in size.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure, obviously, with time that went by, I just want to make sure that was covered.
Thank you.
And one change, I'm sorry.
Please, no, please, Mr. Weber.
One change, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to recall Kevin Flanagan
Okay.
because we have a video of how a stacker works, just to eliminate any questions with regard to it.
Okay. Before we move to that, perhaps any questions from members of the board just regarding these items, understanding we're going to hear from a number of witnesses still. Mr. Steiner?
Which report did we get yesterday?
That would have been the sound report.
The sound report, okay. I wasn't sure if it was the sound of the fire. It's what happens when you have hearing aids, you're never sure which one. Okay. When did the fire department, and have they signed off on what they have seen?
Yes. So I spoke with Mr. Michello today, and I sent him that proposal last night. We spoke about it today, and he is actually the one who referred us to this fire protection engineer, this company, and yes, he is happy with us engaging that expert.
But they have not reviewed any of the materials that they have provided. If I remember correctly, you scrolled through tons of stuff, and I don't think he read that all today.
The proposal for the fire protection engineer?
Right.
So we've reviewed it, and it looks accurate, and it's going to cover...
But the city officials have not reviewed it.
No. I don't feel comfortable saying that he's reviewed that detail.
I'm not going to be very comfortable voting on this until I know where all of our experts...
Perhaps pause for a second. How's the condition written so that...
That's why we have that condition in place, that the applicant shall engage the fire protection engineer with experience with garage stackers to design a sprinkler system which shall be subject to review and approval of the fire chief.
I'm not sure I'm ready to proceed unless we have that.
Well, we do have the...
But let's move on. Let's not hold up the whole mic.
Well, we can solve this issue. The proposal will be signed by the Flanagan's upon the, if the board approves the application, and they will sign this proposal. This fire expert that has been referred by Joe Michello of the Summit Fire Department is, where is he located? California?
California.
So that's how far this search has gone in order to find this type of expert. So the expert's coming from California, and he is going to be retained in order to help design, consult with, and oversee the fire suppression system, and that is acceptable to Joe Michello and the Summit Fire Department.
Right.
Mr. Michello just did not have time today
Right.
to get that report in writing.
Exactly.
So it is a representation that is made by Ms. Alfonso to the board as an attorney-at-law, and I'm looking at you, making sure that you understand that.
Yes, and I specifically asked Mr. Michello if I could today tell the board that he was comfortable with us doing it this way with a condition of approval for him to approve the design with this protection engineer to be engaged.
And it will be this particular engineer. So in terms of that condition, I would list that engineer's name and the title of his company.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any questions from members of the board on these items? And I'll just pause to offer any members of the interested public the opportunity to ask questions. At this time, it's limited to this additional information, some of which may be new, given their relative recent delivery.
Good evening. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. On the noise study, we had spoke last meeting about the sound system or the vibration from the, is there an exhaust system for the underground garage? And I don't see any mention of that study in that, in the paperwork you provided.
If you can go to the top of the report, you'll see that he does mention that there are the louvered areas, so he is aware of that, and that was included in his report.
And what do we say about that?
Have to come closer.
I'm going to take a picture of that.
You're going to be reading down? Over there? In the second paragraph at this page, the garage will have one driveway opening facing north, as well as one or more louvers facing Morris Avenue, and a louvered vent facing River Road.
So is that a mechanical vent or just a pressure vent? In other words, is there something pushing the exhaust out, or is it just air feeding through? The reason why I ask, promenade, constantly you hear their vent.
Sure. Just one moment, Mr. Nelson.
Not to be a pain.
They're just passive vents.
So there's no mechanical? Okay.
I would ask that, that response comes from Nancy Dougherty, who's been previously sworn as the architect here. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Could you answer the question for Mr. Nelson? Is that a passive vent or are they powered?
Those are passive vents.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Did you pick that up? Yes, in case that wasn't picked up on the microphone, Ms. Nelson said it was, or sorry, remind me your last name?
Oh, Ms. Dougherty.
Ms. Dougherty, sorry, Ms. Dougherty. It just commented that they are passive vents. There is no mechanical component to them. Thank you. Sorry.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
The transcribing's on over the microphone or through YouTube, so we just want to make sure everything gets captured on the microphone. Okay. Any questions from members of the interested public on these topics? Okay. All right. Hearing none. Mr. Weber, you may proceed.
I would ask that Kevin Flanagan be recalled to the stand for testimony with regard to the stackers. We're going to show the video.
Hello, everybody. Kevin Flanagan, chairman, board. Thank you for coming out tonight. I do appreciate it. It's the 27th of July. It's already been stated, and it's not the best night to be out here, I'm sure, for all of you, but thank you for putting your time in for it.
The air conditioning's working tonight here, so we're thankful.
Yes. Mr. Flanagan, what we're going to be showing the board are the videos that you had engaged, and you actually were present during the taking of these videos. Will they, the videos that are showing, do they depict what actually occurred at the time you took them, and when were they taken?
They do. It was about two weeks ago up at Motorcar Manor.
If we could show the video now?
Over here is the controls for it, and this is pneumatic electric lift. So it has a reservoir down bottom for the fluid and then the motor up top. Now I'm going to show you how they operate. Okay. Last part I want to show you is dropping a vehicle down. So what that entails is lifting the vehicle slightly. It's come off the lift, under release, and you pull down the safety. And you drop the lift down. As the lift is coming down, I start pulling the right safety belt. Simple as that. Now the car's down, you drive it off.
Now, Mr. Flanagan, one of the questions that come up was, how are you going to operate them if there's a power outage? And it's my understanding that you will have an emergency generator there, and you will be able to transfer power to each of these lifts from that generator in order to allow the lift to be lifted off the control points and then reduced and lowered by the hydraulics. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And here's the last picture, and this was a view from afar, showing the video as you entered into the garage. And what size are these? Are these two-car lifts or are these three-car lifts?
These are two-car lifts.
Two-car lifts, and so what you're proposing are 39 three-car lifts, which will be one more on top of that.
That's correct.
And that was one of the reasons, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that the Summit Fire Department is saying, "Okay, we understand the two-car lifts, but we want to really be certain with regard to the three-car lift." And that's why the Flanagan's have gone through the nation trying to find that expert, and has found that expert that the Summit Fire Department finds appropriate and authoritative in order to provide the appropriate fire suppression system. I have nothing further of Mr. Flanagan.
Do you want to play the second video?
Sure.
Hi, everyone. This is Kevin Flanagan, just taking a quick video. This is Kevin Flanagan, just taking a quick video at Motor Car Manor, just to show you the general idea of the way that this would work. As you can see, the lifts are substantial and they have a drip pan underneath them to prevent anything from dripping, uh, onto the car below.
Have we, uh, marked that into evidence, Ms. Alfonso?
Uh, yes, that'll be, it's all on the exhibit list.
It's under A twenty.
That's A twenty, okay.
I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from our engineers on vehicle lifts? Mr. Flanagan, I don't know if you have much background in that, but we'll learn something new every day. Uh, any questions then for members of the board?
Yeah, I, I want, I think this was testified to before, but refresh my memory. It looks like a very tight fit getting one off those lifts. Does that just be valet only on those lifts or?
That's correct. Yeah, these will be only operated by the valets and the vehicles will be pulled, even the lowest level one will be pulled out only by valets.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Hearing no further questions from the board. Any questions for Mr. Flanagan, for members of the public on this particular?
I'm sorry.
If you'd like, sure. No, Mr. Nelson, you're welcome.
I noticed on the noise study.
Sorry, just come forward, just state your name and address again, and then your question.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Sorry to be a pain. I know on the noise study you said that it marked that the generator is excluded from certain decibels during emergencies. So if there's a power outage, what's the definition of an emergency?
A power outage.
Because to get a car out, is that considered an emergency?
During the course of the operation of the generator, that could be part of the emergency. Sure.
Okay. My definition of emergency is a little bit different, but.
There'll be an opportunity for comment later, so.
Gotcha.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? Yes, please.
Good evening. Karthik Jaram, 11th Plain Street. Um, the one question that I had was regarding the noise levels. Um, was there like, how many measurements done on, like, what's the decibels when you operated that, uh, that stacking system? The decibel levels, um, when the stacking system was operated?
Yes, that was included as part of the overall review, and he found that the cumulative effect would be consistent and compliant with the ordinance.
Is there a measurement that was provided as part of that study?
Specs, specifications for the equipment.
I'm just trying to understand, like, what would be like a closest, like an analogous sound that you could relate it to?
I cannot, I'm just.
There's dishwashers that are like fifty decibels or forty decibels. So I'm trying to understand, like, what was the measurement here?
There's a standard that's established by ordinance and by state regulations, which limits the amount of decibels that can be emitted from a particular place. It's lower at night and it's louder during the day. This complies with those standards, so it will comply with the ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to follow on his question, we don't have a point of reference to, to offer only, and your assurance is certainly welcome, that it complies, but we don't have a point of reference. It's not a, say, a gas power leak lower, for example.
We, we don't.
Not that noisy, okay. All right, thank you.
Actually, if I could.
That was a cheap shot. I'm sorry.
The shop at Thirty-Five River Road does have the same sound in lifts in it, um, which are very proximate to your house. And that's an above-ground structure, as opposed to an in-ground structure where these are going to be held. So if, if, if you're not hearing those coming, you know, emanating from that building, um, I, I can't imagine that you're going to hear them emanating from a, a sub, subgrade structure.
Thank you. Excellent.
I have, I have a question. Maybe it's not important, uh, but, so you say that it meets the standards for, it meets the current code. Is that for the zoning as it stands now, commercial with residential in that area? Or would that meet the change with the variance, which would make it the whole residential? Is there, is there a difference for commercial, residential?
So it looks like the lowest.
Can you be heard?
Thank you. It looks like the lowest standard is fifty decibels and all the levels here were below fifty decibels. So it's the, below the lowest minimum.
All right. Any no other questions? I think we can move on from car stackers. Mr. Webber?
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Thank you.
I would ask that Josh Worrie be recalled to the stand.
Good evening, everybody.
Mr. Worrie, when we last left, uh, you had completed circulation stormwater landscape and you're going on to the site lighting. The lighting on the building itself was already testified to by the architect.
That's correct. We were just about to get into the lighting design. Uh, Ms. Alfonso, would it be possible to bring up the lighting plan? It should be sheet eight in our site plan set.
Well, while we're doing that, uh, Mr. Worrie, there is a bit associated with the lighting that's proposed on the site, and it talks about a pole that is higher than the permitted, I forget how high they permit them, eight feet?
Yeah, that's correct. The city requirement is a maximum of eight feet.
And I looked at all the lights in the back of the building toward Plain Street, and I could not, I think, find the sixteen-foot, uh, height that you, uh, show on your plan.
So the highest light that is mounted is actually a building-mounted light, and that's going to be the lights along the front of the building, along Morris Avenue. And that's mainly due to the slope and grade along Morris Avenue.
But you do have lights in the back, I think, that, uh, are over the eight feet?
That is correct. There's several pole-mounted lights as well, located within the surface parking lot, as well as along the proposed driveway. Those are mounted at twelve-feet height, uh, which is fairly standard for development like this. However, they are shielded and, um, so that there is no light trespass to the adjacent properties.
What do you mean, shielded?
There is actually a, a shield built in so that there's no light glare, um, behind the light, uh, you know, directed towards the property lines.
So the, for Karthik's point of view, for him looking at this, uh, light fixture, he's not going to be able to see the source of the light?
That is correct.
Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. As well as we are providing zero-foot candles along the entirety of the rear property line.
What's a foot candle?
It is the, a measurement of light, um, a specific measurement of light. The city of Summit has a requirement of, um, I believe it's point-two foot candles at the property line. We're providing zero-foot candles at the rear property line, as well as a majority of the side property line, so that we have no light spillage onto the adjacent properties.
But you do need to provide some light in the parking lot for safety and for egress.
That is correct. So the lighting design does provide adequate site lighting for safety, security, as well as minimizing off-site glare.
Ms. Alfonso, has she been able to pull up the, uh, sheet eight?
Okay. So this plan is entitled Lighting Plan. It's dated July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, last revised April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at a scale of one inch equals twenty feet, and north is to the top-left corner of the page. So this was the lighting plan that was included in our site plan set, which colorizes the locations of the proposed site lighting for reference. Ms. Alfonso, I'm just looking at the exhibit, doesn't look like this may not be the latest version.
Do you want the color exhibit?
If we have it, that, that would be.
That's easier.
Okay. It was one of the comments, um, I believe, in the engineering letters was to colorize the lights for reference, just so it would be easier to, uh, to review.
And it said it's dated?
Uh, dated July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, last revised April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Should be the, uh, the lighting plan that was submitted in our last set to the board. And if we don't have it, I do actually have a hard copy as well, if that makes it easier.
Well, let's, uh, let's see if we can bring it up on the screen so it's easy for everyone to see. Let's talk about the driveway that's, uh, going down to the garage. How's that going to be illuminated?
So there are actually wall-mounted recessed lights, um, that are proposed within the wall of, um, the proposed garage ramp. These are mounted at three-feet heights, um, and this is actually, so the wa, the light will be below the top of the retaining wall, so they'll be, you know, shielded and no light spillage towards the residents at the rear of the site.
And then you have a row of parking spaces, uh, that are, consist of the fifteen parking spaces. How are they going to be illuminated? And the number of poles and the height, et cetera?
Yeah, so these, those will be, uh, lit by the pole-mounted lights, um, as noted. Uh, so there are several poles within the surface parking area, as well as the driveway, and these are mounted at twelve feet and, and shielded.
And the, uh, do you have a detail of what the fixture will look like on the pole mount?
We do. No?
If you could get your exhibit.
All right, everybody, sorry for the, for the wait on that. So getting into the plan, um, as noted on the plan, we are providing brand-new LED light fixtures throughout the site. There are pole-mounted, uh, lights within the surface parking lot, as well as along the proposed driveway entrance. These are highlighted in red, orange, and gold. These are mounted at twelve-feet heights, and as previously noted, uh, they're shielded from the adjacent property lines. We also have recessed downlights under the canopies near the lobby entrance, as well as the front patio area. These areas are highlighted in green and are mounted at ten feet and twelve feet. And again, these are recessed underneath the canopies in these areas. Uh, we also have, as Mr. Webber, um, you know, questioned before, several decorative building-mounted lights. These are highlighted in dark blue. A majority of these are located along the front of the building, along Morris Avenue, as well as several near, uh, the lobby canopy entrance, and these range from eight feet to sixteen feet in heights. And again, this is due a majority to the slope along Morris Avenue. We also have, uh, wall-mounted, wall-mounted recessed lights. These are highlighted in purple, and again, these are proposed within the wall of the proposed parking garage ramp and are mounted at three feet in height. Again, these, uh, lights are mounted below the top of the retaining wall, so that there's no, uh, light spillage to the rear of the site. For clarity, there was a typo in one of the light levels on the garage ramp. This was noted in Mr. Duer's review letter, and just to clarify, the light levels, um, in front of these lights range from one-foot candle to approximately five-foot candles, and, uh, this is something that we'll, we will make sure to fix in our next round for resolution compliance.
That's the ten-point-one?
That is correct. So Mr. Duer was, uh, questioning that bright spot, um, in the plan, and again, this was, uh, you know, a mistake, uh, in, in the software that we will, we will, uh, fix. Um, next, per code, there are several security lights.
Before you do that, can we just talk about the particular fixtures?
Sure.
So the fixture that's shown to be in the driveway, is that shown here as a wall-mounted detail E?
That is within the, the wall of the garage ramp, yes.
Okay. Then with regard to the poles?
That's.
Is that shown as?
The guard curling.
Detail A one, A two, and A three?
That is correct, yes.
And that's shown in the upper left-hand, upper right-hand corner?
That is correct.
And then where is the pole mount? Uh, where, where is the wall-mounted detail?
That, on the bottom right, have the, right hand of the page, um, those are the decorative building light fixtures.
And the ceiling mount?
That is correct, yes.
And that goes underneath the, uh?
The canopy is located near the lobby entrance, as well as there, there's a canopy, um, above the patio area at the front of the building. Um, lastly, there, uh, per code, there are several security lights proposed at egress door locations. These are highlighted in light blue, and they're simply mounted above the doors at eight-feet heights. Um, a light temperature of three thousand Kelvin is proposed, which complies with the city's standards, and as noted, uh, we will require variance for the mounting height as only eight feet is permitted. However, the design complies with the city's light intensity requirements while providing zero-foot candles along the rear of the property line, um, and, as well as a majority of the side property lines, so that no light spillage is proposed. Lastly, on lighting, there are several existing light poles within the right-of-way along Morris Avenue. Our office did perform a light study and determined that the light levels along the newly-proposed sidewalk comply with the city's roadside residential sidewalk requirement, whereas zero-point-two foot candles is required, and there are zero-point-three foot candles existing to remain. I believe that wraps up my testimony, um, for the lighting.
Are any of these uplit?
No.
What about the wall mount? It looks as though there's a.
There's, there's actually a.
A prism or a lens at the top of it.
There is actually a shield at the top, and I think this was clarified in our response letter to Krista Anisson.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll just pause for a moment. Karthik, Don, could you even see the exhibit? Did you guys follow that? You're okay? Yeah? Um, anything from our professionals regarding that small snippet of testimony?
I think that is.
Please.
Chairman, uh, just a few things for clarification. You're talking about house-size shields, correct?
That's.
In the fixtures themselves, okay?
Yes.
You'll have those. In the ramp wall lights, does the ramp, uh, the retaining wall that's around the ramp itself, is that consistently at that three-foot height as you come up and around, so therefore the lights are at three feet?
That is correct.
Okay. And that, so therefore at that three-foot height too, that would help to block any lighting? This is related to lighting, but cars that are exiting out of the driveway? I think that came off the last meeting, like, the layer that comes up, uh, to adjacent residential properties?
That is correct.
That wall's high enough to shield that?
Yes.
Okay. How close are the closest twelve-foot-high fixtures? They're really just within that parking lot area?
That is correct.
So therefore they're not right adjacent to the residential properties?
The closest, um, uh, pole-mounted lights are really adjacent to the promenade development. There aren't very, um, the closest, uh, pole-mounted lights are really within that surface parking lot and not near the rear property line.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything regarding lighting? Just as a natural break in the testimony from the board? No? Okay. Anything?
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Uh, what, what are the operating hours for, uh, especially the, the toss lights?
Uh, since this is a residential development, uh, I would assume that for safety reasons, they would be on at all times.
All time.
Okay.
I have a question as well. Is, is the variance, um, um, the proposed variance relating to lights only with respect to the height? Is there any other variance, uh, requested?
No.
With respect to maximal illumination or anything?
Yeah, so we, the only variance that we require is regarding the height. The design complies with all of the intensity requirements, which the city has.
Thank you.
No problem.
Can I follow up with that, that, on that question? Why not use an eight-foot pole?
To be honest, that, it, it is quite short for a typical, uh, design of this size, um, providing, you know, a taller pole-mounted light, say, at twelve feet that we're proposing, it gives it a more uniform, uh, design, less bright spots throughout the parking lot.
And would you need more poles if you used eight feet in order to provide the illumination necessary for safety?
That's correct, yes.
So you'd have more poles? And what is the distance that Chair, I think the Chair had asked? What's the distance of the pole to the rear lot line? Do you have a scale?
I do. I'm looking at the setback from the, the closest point of the building. It's about approximately thirty-two-point-seven feet, and I would say, you know, it's very close to that dimension, so about thirty-two, thirty-three feet from the rear property line.
And by putting the pole at that spot, uh, thirty-two feet away, and having it with a shield, the light's going to go toward Turkano Park, not toward the rear, uh, property owners?
That is correct. All of these pole-mounted lights are directed to, directly towards the building and the parking area, not towards the rear of the, rear of the site.
Thank you, I'm just following up on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, yep. Thank you. Carthick or Don, any questions you guys want to offer regarding lighting?
No.
Okay. Mr. Worry, if you have more, you're welcome to proceed.
Mr. Weber, I think I just had one last thing, just to update the board from the last hearing. We did receive an approval from the county. I don't know if that was mentioned or brought up since the last hearing. So at this point, we do have approvals from the SED, Soul Conservation District, and the county.
And the County Planning Board?
Correct, yes.
Very good, Mr. Worry. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one last opportunity for questions before Mr. Worry sits. From the board, from our professionals, I don't think so, from the public? No? All right, well done, Mr. Worry, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would ask that Craig Perigoy be pulled to the stand, be sworn in to give testimony in this matter.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Sure, my name is Craig Perigoy, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've heard before recently?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. Been working as a traffic engineer for 22 years now, and I testify pretty much on a nightly basis, including here in Summit a number of times.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept those credentials?
We'll accept your credentials. Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Mr. Perigoy, are you familiar with the application that is currently pending before the board?
I am.
How did you achieve that familiarity?
We prepared a traffic impact study to assess the traffic impacts of the project.
And are you familiar with the City of Summit and its development regulations ordinance?
Yes, as it relates to traffic engineering, yes.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
Review of the ordinance requirements.
You prepared a traffic, I don't understand why traffic engineers call them traffic impact studies. But that's neither here nor there.
Studying the impact of the traffic?
It gets the board's attentions for sure, so.
Yes, it does.
Don't disappoint, all right?
You prepared a traffic impact study, and I believe that that study's been reviewed by Colliers Engineering, by the Summit Police, and by the county. Would you be so kind as to share that study with the board? Describing what is a peak hour, describing what's the number of cars within that peak hour, and going through that process for the board?
Sure. Hopefully it's as exciting as the lighting discussion. So the goal actually of a traffic impact study is to sort of look into the future and find out, get an idea of what the traffic conditions will be like in the vicinity of this project with and without the project, and then determine that delta and if there is an impact or something that a project of this size is creating that might create an issue in terms of traffic impact. So we start that process by establishing a baseline. We take traffic counts in the area, and what we're looking at is the peak hours, the busiest hours of the day. So for a residential building like this, you're looking at the morning and evening rush hour time periods. So we take our counts from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on a weekday and 4:00 PM, sorry, to 6:00 PM on a weekday. And then within those two-hour periods, we find the highest hour, the busiest hour. So we have established the morning peak hour and then the evening peak hour. Essentially, the idea is that any other time of day, the traffic volumes are going to be lower, and any impacts from this building would be lesser. So we're looking at the worst-case scenario, the worst periods. For this project, our initial traffic impact study, we counted the intersection, obviously the signal adjacent, at Morris Avenue and River Road. And we did those counts in February of 2021. That's when, you know, the project came to us. And obviously, at that time, establishing that baseline was a little bit difficult because we had the impacts from the COVID pandemic greatly depressing traffic volumes. Fortunately, there's a lot of data available pre-pandemic that we're able to compare to and use that to adjust what we counted during the COVID pandemic. Subsequent to that initial report, however, we did go back out and take updated counts to, you know, as traffic volume started to climb back up. And we went in April of this past year. Counted that same intersection, and we also counted the driveway closest to us at the promenade. And added that into our analysis. The traffic lines were certainly a little bit closer to normal in April, but they weren't quite to that pre-pandemic level, so I did still adjust them. So taking that potential out of there, looking at what traffic would expected, would have expected to be if we hadn't got hit by the pandemic.
If I can interrupt, Mr. Perigoy?
Sure.
Initiative to go out and conduct another study, that came from, I think, the city's professionals saying, why don't you bring that up to speed at this point?
Yes, correct. And this way, we have two data points and two, you know, means of adjustment. And again, we were able to pick up that promenade driveway that was adjacent, which is something that the county was interested in us looking at. So anyway, as I said, we identified the peak single busiest hour in that weekday evening and weekday morning. Now, that's the baseline traffic volumes, I guess, the expected, had we not had COVID traffic volumes, that exist today. I need to project that into the future and see what the future traffic volumes would be. And there's two things that we do to do that. One is, New Jersey DOT publishes a growth rate, an annual growth rate, just based on background traffic volumes. For this area and these type of roadways, it's 1% growth rate. So I grow the traffic volumes by that growth rate. And we also know that there is a large residential development just over the river in Chatham, 245-unit development. I obtained the traffic study that that was prepared for that by their traffic engineer, used those volumes and added those in too to make sure that we really got a good picture of what the future traffic volumes would be before this project comes in. The next step I need to do is determine how much traffic our development's going to generate, our 52 units. And that's done with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. They have a trip generation manual. I'm sure you've heard other traffic engineers tell you about it, and it's what we use to, it's based on historical counts at other similar developments. We're able to use that based on the number of units in this case and the size of the building to project the future traffic volumes during those peak hours. So again, we're isolating the single busiest hour in the morning and the evening. And the 52 units would generate during the morning peak hour a total of 18 trips. A trip is a vehicle either entering or exiting the property. During the PM peak hour, it would generate 24 trips. Again, a trip is entering or exiting. So obviously, in the morning, you're going to have more exiting, in the evening, more entering. That's the nature of a residential development. Typically, a traffic study, a full traffic impact study with counts and everything, is done for a development that's going to increase by 100 or more peak hour trips. So we're at about a quarter of that here. We still did the full traffic impact study, but that 100 trips is what's termed by the ITE and New Jersey DOT as a significant increase in traffic. And again, we're at about 25% of what they'd consider significant.
And when you say that 25%, that's at the PM peak hour in the morning?
The morning, it's less than 20%. You also have to keep in mind that you do have development on the site today. There's four driveways along Morris Avenue, residential development, you have the pro-care, physical therapy. So removing that traffic is even going to further diminish it below that threshold of what you'd consider significant. So based on those numbers, I wouldn't expect there to be a measurable impact, let's say, at the off-site intersections. But we did go through that analysis to determine if there was. What we do is, it's called a capacity analysis. It's a software program that uses the traffic signal timing, lane width, stop control, approach grades, traffic volumes. There's a lot of data that goes into it. And it assesses the delay, amount of delay per vehicle, which is then related to a level of service. A is the best or the least delay, F is the worst or failing condition. In this area, in this case, under both no-build and build conditions, in other words, with or without this project, the levels of service do not change at the intersection of Morris and Summit. It's at a, the overall at a C in the morning peak hour and a D in the evening peak hour. We do not move the needle at all. And again, I wouldn't have expected to, given the volume of traffic that we're generating, that insignificant traffic, but the analysis bears that out. Our site driveway on Morris Avenue operates at acceptable level of service, D, both peak hours, which is in a peak hour considered to be acceptable here in New Jersey. That's what the DOT accepts. So the access point itself works effectively. There's no impact to the levels of service at the adjacent signal. And again, like I said, this is not a major traffic generator here, so those results don't surprise me based on the numbers that we're seeing. I think an improvement in terms of the traffic perspective is the cleaning up of those driveways along Morris Avenue. Getting rid of four driveways, consolidating it to one as far from the signal as possible. It took a little bit to kind of thread it in there and get it to where it wasn't too close to the promenade, but we didn't want to move it towards the signal, so we got it in the right location. You heard Mr. Worry mention that we got the county approval on that location. So I think really the access to the properties in general is being cleaned up. We're not generating enough traffic to move the needle or create any significant impact at any off-site intersections, and the driveway operates safely and efficiently. We've talked plenty about the parking. We know we exceed the parking requirements, and I think onsite circulation has been discussed by both the architect and the engineer. So unless anybody has any questions on those specifics, I think we'll leave it to the prior testimony for that.
If I can also interrupt something?
Sure.
There was a point that you had raised in the initial review where because the intersection of Morris and River Road, as you're heading north, allows you to make either a right turn or a left turn?
Correct.
It was very important for you that the driveway be situated in a way that people exiting could then proceed and be able to make a right or a left?
Yeah, that's a good point. Moving the, you have a left-turn lane at the, as you approach the intersection with River Road. Our driveway is located such that when you're pulling out of the site and you look to the left, you're only looking at one lane of traffic. It doesn't open to the two lanes with the left-turn lane and the through lane until beyond to the right. So that was one of the reasons we wanted to keep that driveway as far as possible. Matter of fact, if this was a state highway, the DOT would insist that you keep any driveways out of those turn lanes. So we've effectively done that. Two of the four are currently right on top of the turn lane as it exists today.
And what about making a left out of the driveway?
Yes, my analysis includes left turns in and out of the driveway, just like the promenade driveway next door, which is a little more active than this driveway based on our traffic counts.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll pose a question to you, Mr. Weber, then. I find traffic impact studies vexing, confusing, distracting at times. There's a lot of different elements that are in here.
You can say boring too, it's okay.
No, no, it's okay. You're living, man, you do what you got to do. Many of these decisions with regard to this type of application are left with, through NJDOT statute, through County Planning Board. Can you, just for the sake and clarity of the board and members of the interested public here, can you help, we've talked about the driveway, for example. Can you help clarify or focus our attention on elements of this application that are perhaps highlighted here within the traffic impact study that are relevant or under the control of the board as opposed to under the control of other entities? And what you miss, Andy's going to pick up the slack on, so don't worry.
What the, I believe that the board would be focused on and would be, in terms of the peak hour leaving, how much of the cars are going to queue up? So that is something that the board would be aware of and should be focused on. So if you have 18 cars leaving during the peak hour, what does that mean? They all leave at the same time? And if so, where are you going to put 18 cars? So that is one aspect, is the queue length that's provided here. In terms of that left turn, you want to be assured that you can make that left turn. The county has approved this. We want to make sure because you don't want cars going down to River Road, making a right, making a right on plane, going around, and then trying to head left on Morris Avenue. And that's why it's important that that left turn be approved by the county. Now, the board may not be aware, but there was a prior application before the planning board down the street, the Primrose, and the Primrose School was unable to convince the county that what they were proposing would suffice and would work. And so as a result, the county exercised its jurisdiction and said, we disapprove of this approach. So it may not seem like a lot to the board to get the Union County Planning Board on its arterial Morris Avenue that goes all the way from Summit all the way to Elizabeth for them to look at that and say, we're okay with this. So that's the other point. But in terms of the board's point of view, the question would be, okay, this peak hour, tell us about this peak hour, tell us about the queue lane, and do we have sufficient ability here? Because that's the kind of design that the board on this preliminary and final site plan review has the right to look at, access egress.
On-site circulation, and that's?
On-site circulation.
He makes a good point, too. We do have plenty of stacking on the site. I looked while you were talking just because the queue length that coming out of the site is a mathematical calculation, and the 95th percentile, meaning 95% of the time the queue is less than this number, calculates to 0.2. So that doesn't mean a motorcycle will be sitting there. Very rarely is.
Anything else Andy you'd like to draw attention to, just again to focus the board's attention?
I think they more or less covered it. On-site access and egress, safety concerns, or ingress and egress, rather.
How about?
Safety concerns should be the primary focus of the board. Any off-site traffic impact becomes less and less relevant the further you get from the site.
Andy, sorry?
How about, what is the plan for how many valets will be working from 7 to 9 and 4 to 6?
Honestly, the answer to, I mean, the Flanagan's can chime in, but the answer to that is however many they need to make it work. Nobody's going to want to live there if it takes them too long to get their car or there's an issue.
I believe the Flanagan's have testified to this, but Mr. Weber, if there's anything you'd like to, in summary?
If I recall, I believe it was two. So they will have at least two valet. The other point with regard to the egress was site triangle. That's also something that the board and its ordinance establishes a site triangle. By that, well, I'll let Mr. Perigoy explain what that is.
Right, your visibility looking to the left and the right, but in your case, you're right, the county reviews that here as we're on a county road. It is a little unique that we're at the intersection of two county roads. They have a little more control maybe than you do in some of their cases.
In case it becomes a condition of approval? I think that overnight, if Flanagan's wanted to be able to have just one valet available, but during the day it would be two. Thank you. Because overnight, they don't expect too many people.
At peak, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, sorry, we're just trying to focus this so we can get to the planning testimony. Is there anything else you'd like to draw attention to? Otherwise, I'll offer members of the board to ask questions.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Mr. Stein, so you jump out of your seat?
Now, I'm not jumping out of my seat, but I've lived with traffic impact studies forever. And I've read them before.
Me too.
And I'm a little concerned about whether or not we're looking at the big picture. Let me ask, and it may be in here and I may have missed it, or maybe, whatever. One of the things you talk about is the fact that you have to predict the future. Well, this was done in April. This summer, we got a new traffic light on River Road. If I read my social media in any manner, shape, or form, it's caused a disaster. How are we dealing with that with this particular? We're also a mile and a half, I'll do it all and then you can just take it apart.
Okay.
We're a mile and a half from one of the most read, I never thought I'd say this, one of the big shopping centers in the state of New Jersey, the mall at Short Hills, which does a lot of traffic down River Road. As a matter of fact, when 24 was built and intersections and access were changed, we actually have an exit in Summit to get you to Chatham. I mean, you know, all kinds of things. Have we got the right time of day that is the major area of concern? Everything I see says it's noon time and shopping time. Not 4 to 7, not 7 to 9, you know, it's this other time. Have we looked, and then the last thing is, across the street, and you've mentioned them many, many times in this presentation, there is a major development from Bristol-Myers Squibb, which is not operational at this point and which will bring lots of stuff. Has their traffic analysis been factored into this? All yours.
Okay, I'll start. First, you mentioned looking at the big picture. This isn't a big-picture traffic study. This is a, what is the impact of this building in the immediate area type of traffic study? There are planning, regional planning studies that would go far afield of this, but my job here is to say, what's this going to do?
Are we going to make our community worse by allowing this to happen?
Absolutely not. That's the task of this traffic study. Not necessarily the big picture because there's a lot of moving parts, but what is this building going to make traffic worse for Summit? And the answer is unequivocally no.
But to the question of the bigger picture that was addressed at the County Planning Board? Yes?
Yes.
That's the role that they play.
The county road is their role, yes.
But I would like to read that.
Did the county also approve that traffic light?
I'm not going to comment on the county, but that's the role they're intended to play.
I would love to see their.
Calls into question credibility.
I think it affects us. I would love to see what they wrote.
The new traffic light, I understand a lot of times when a new traffic light goes in, the timing needs to be tweaked. It may be something that the county's going to go back out and revisit because you can do the best you can to guess, but people start taking different routes. And oftentimes, that timing needs to be tweaked. So hopefully that'll happen, and it won't be as much of an issue. But we did go back out and spot count after the signal went in just to see, because a lot of times, the volume getting to the next signal will be less, and the volume leaving it will be more because the next signal upblocks it. So we did some spot counts to make sure, and it? signal upblocks it. So we did some spot counts to make sure, and it, and it's not doing that along River Road.
So we do have a third point of reference.
Yes, the volumes matched up.
And whatever, that's.
Yeah, this was.
Good information for us to have.
Yes, May. We went, you know, we didn't do the full two hours. We went in the peak hour and got, uh, the one, the one hour that we identified as the peak hour in each. The volumes matched up almost precisely to what we counted in April. So that traffic signal isn't necessarily affecting what's getting through on River Road, but I understand. It, it probably, and I hope it will get, get tweaked. Um, the point of my analysis, though, is, all right, we're not impacting the signal right next to us. So even less of our traffic's gonna impact that signal. So this development, again, is what I'm looking at, isn't gonna have any impact there. The mall, you mentioned, you know, shopping time. The DOT and the county have, uh, 24-hour traffic counts along the corridor, and the peak, the commuter hours are the busiest. But what's more important is this building's gonna be the busiest at the, at the commuter hours as well. So I'm assuming that the peak hour of everybody leaving and from, for work in the morning and coming back in the evening of this building is precisely the same time as the peak hour of the roadway, putting them right on top of one another to get that worst-case scenario. On a Saturday, shopping time, yes, it's busy. It, it gets close, but it's not quite to the commuter time. But this building isn't gonna be as active. The traffic's more spread out on a weekend for a residential building. So I'm looking at the time where our building and the road are the worst. So Saturday will be less of an impact. I think that was, what was the third thing?
Bristol Myers.
Bristol Myers Squibb, yes. And I understand that was, that's a rehabilitation of an existing building. I'm not sure when that went away or came back. I know that's a, that's a huge campus. I mean, I'm not sure if they're adding employees to that building, reshuffling the deck, moving things around, but the delta from this isn't gonna be impacted by that building. It's, it's what I'm looking at is the change. So, you know, I, I don't know that there was a traffic study done for that because it's an existing campus. It was a building rehab.
Well, I think all of Bristol Myers, if we're gonna go to that building, that's gonna impact the traffic. And I think the times for this traffic study, cause I live on Webster, so it's like five blocks away.
Mm-hmm.
It should be like 2:30 or 3:30 when the schools are out because you can't get out of the street.
Yeah, and a lo, and a lot of times the school, if it's a school close, a lot of times that does impact it, but like I said.
Oh, there's four.
Yeah, well, we have that 24-hour, well, right, as in right adjacent. We have that 24-hour data that does show that we're getting the highest hour. We're getting the busiest hour.
I live there, and it's real life. So the traffic studies really never, it, it really doesn't equate to me because I see it every day.
Understood. Well, the second point, too, to your point about the school is this, this building isn't gonna be as busy. This is gonna be, you know, people commuting from work is gonna be the busiest time. So this will have less of an impact.
There's elementary school, there's a high school, there's two private schools. They all use Morris Avenue.
Yeah.
Can I ask a methodology question, Maria? So what level of trip generation would be required to adversely affect your levels of service here? Take your C to a D, your D to an F, let's say.
I mean, it, it varies. I, in this specific case, I, you can sort of back into that and do a sensitivity analysis. I didn't do that in this case. We obviously don't change those levels of service. That hundred-trip marker is what I mentioned before. DOT doesn't make me do a, do anything unless it's more than a hundred trips because they assume anything less than that, you're not gonna notice day to day. It's not a big enough impact to, to, to really move the needle. So that hundred trip is where you more likely get an, get an impact.
I get it would be likely.
Small building, 52 units, it's not a big traffic generator.
I guess where I'm going with this, you know, I'm, I'm seeing your table of tri- trip generation, and 18 a.m. trips, peak hour for a 52-unit building seems fairly low. I mean, I'm just going by my own personal experience. I recall living in a 30-unit building in Hoboken years ago, and obviously Hoboken's a much more public transit-intensive town than, than this one. And I can guarantee you, we had more than 18 trips in the morning during peak hours.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go further than that. I mean, I live in a 32-unit, uh, complex in Summit, and when I saw this number, 13 exiting trips from 52 units, I laughed. I mean, I, my 30, my 32 unit, we probably have more than that in the rush hour, and to follow up on Joe's point, during the day as well. I mean, it, I, I'm not saying this is your fault. You're following standard tables or whatever, but I'm not sure that we should take this as an honest, as an accurate estimate of what the traffic's gonna be.
It's, it's probably not. It's higher than it probably is. You gotta keep in mind, this is the one hour. Yes, more than 13 cars are gonna exit in the morning, but I'm looking at one hour. The, the, the hour before might be 12, the hour after that it might be 12. It, the one busiest hour is all I'm isolating. And I get this all the time. I've done my own counts in New Jersey at residential buildings, and every one of them is lower than what the ITE data tells me. Sometimes it's close, but it's always lower.
So what assumptions do I have the ITE data? What, what are, what are we assuming here? Are we assuming a certain percentage of people not using their cars in the morning, walking to public transit? I mean, what, what are we actually assuming?
I'm, I'm not using any public transit credit in this. There, they have different categories in that trip generation manual. This is a mid-rise residential building, and you can choose close to rail transit or not close to rail transit. This is the numbers for not close to rail transit, so it's not taking any credit for that, that rail transit. The other thing you can do, and I, I didn't in this case, uh, but I could, the, the census gives you the, the time leaving home to go to work, and I, I've had to do this, I've looked at this in other towns, and it's usually in that peak hour, it's between 25 and 30% leave at the, the busiest time. So that's, that gives you an idea. People are leaving in the morning between 6 a.m. and 10 a.m. So that 52 units, yeah, it's more than 13 over that period, but I'm looking at that one busiest hour. And then on top of that, I'm assuming that that busy hour is the same as the busiest hour on the street.
What, what assumption do you make, 52 units? What assumption do you make for the number of cars that are gonna be housed, uh, with the residents?
It's, there's probably, I, I don't know how many studies here. I can look at, I can look at my folder if you want, but it's, it's counts at other buildings. And how many cars per unit exit those buildings? And taking the, the average maximums based on dozens.
Well, no, I mean, how many?
So it doesn't assume how many cars, it's just physically cars leaving and exiting.
I meant, do you assume one car per unit, one and a half cars per unit, that, for the people who live there? To, just total cars. Never mind whether they leave during the rush hour or not, but how many cars?
Well, that, I mean, the, the RSIS requirement is what dictates the number of parking spaces. It's 90, 97 here.
So reasonable assumption, close to 97 cars.
Yeah, I, I mean, that includes visitor parking, so probably less than that.
Are we providing for more parking at the subject?
We are. I think we're at 138.
Sorry, what's your expected utilization ratio of that 138 spaces?
Are we recalling Mr. Worrie?
I, I just wanna know a number.
No, I know. I'm just, that was really just for the record. We're recalling Mr. Worrie, he can respond to that question.
Mr. Worrie, would you care to come? Just, you can come up to the microphone.
How many spaces are gonna get utilized?
So, Mr. Parag, I can answer.
Stand down, Mr. Worrie.
If, if I look at, and I'd forgotten that I'd done this. If I look at the, the city of Summit, uh, rent or occupied units, vehicles available, census data, 1.45 per unit is what it comes to. So 75. You have visitor spaces. This, this gives you the advantage to have an additional, you know, a second car.
What about cars that are coming on the property, entering and then exiting, but not staying, and they don't reside there? With 52 un, you know, deliveries, pickups, car pools.
That's all included. Basically, some traffic engineer someplace, or in many places, sat at a, a similar building, a multifamily residential building, and counted how many cars go in and out. In, out, in, out. And that data is extrapolated over multiple data points to, to give you that, that peak hour number.
I don't know that Mr. Mallon's question was answered, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Worrie, or?
Jim, may I, please, I, if I can, it's Samantha. I understand that there are, right, 138 spaces while we only require 97. The idea for the extra spaces, and of course, if you'd like, Mr. Flanagan to talk to this point, but I think your question is more about those extra spaces. Does that mean more people, um, or just more cars? They're meant to provide for a second or third car because it's a higher-end type of unit where people are expected to have a second or third vehicle that they don't always use, but they might wanna keep at their residence.
I wanna, yeah, I just wanna understand the numbers of, number of cars that will regularly be parked onsite attributable to the residents so we can figure out how many trips we realistically expect to be made.
The parking spaces don't necessarily relate to the trips because like, like, it could be somebody's second car. Uh, if you look at, you know, look at the long-term parking lot at Newark Airport has a thousand spaces and there's hardly any traffic in and out of that. But a 7-Eleven has 10 spaces and it generates 10 times the amount of traffic that this does. So it's really the turnover of the parking in a residential building is a lower turnover just by nature.
I, I think what you're hearing from the board is, we're looking at that 13 outbound trip number and probably saying that's a bit low, and we're trying to relate back to the number of cars we can expect at the property and some percentage of that.
So let's hear the sober assessment of the board professionals. Do you, wanna add anything to this aside from the anecdotes that the board has offered today, which are not to be lost in this deliberation, but?
Well, we, I, you know, I do wanna emphasize that, um, they did use industry standard to do that, and I, and I, I do appreciate the, um, the board's, you know, concerns regarding the data, um, you know, but as the, as he, as he testified, that, you know, it is based on industry standards. There's a lot of data that goes behind it. Um, there's a lot of extrapolation that has to happen when you do traffic engineering, and he's expressed it in, um, you know, in, in industry standards.
And maybe to bring us to the finest point possible, you're testifying that vehicles operating on the site, pedestrians utilizing the site, will be able to safely circulate, enter and exit, utilize the property. You're gonna sleep well at night, knowing that what is proposed here in this application allows for no diminishment of safety, quality of life.
I'll sleep like a baby, absolutely. It's, the, yes, the site is well-designed, we will be safe. Luxurious, I mean, valet is fantastic, you know?
All right.
Sure, I lived in Hoboken, too.
I don't wanna belabor the point, but no one's really put a number to my question.
The what? I'm just saying, if this, if this follows the trends of Summit, it would be 75.
How many cars do you expect parked onsite out of the 138?
And my best guess, if this follows the trends of the city of residents, would be 75. And you have visitor spaces. This building, it'll probably be a little higher than the trend because you're able to, to, to find a rental apartment that had, you can have a second car, which is a rarity. But that doesn't mean they're gonna be all used for commuting.
All right. So I, I would just offer, if we're all expecting 75-plus cars parked on there, I'm not sure why we have triple lifts in that, in that parking area.
Well, you, a couple of reasons. What, some, some of those cars, like I said, are gonna be the second one. You'd put them up at the, the top, the third, the, the least occupied. And then otherwise, people want, can, they want it to be fast, so the more flexibility, the better.
Your client is signaling.
Everyone wants to say something.
Just to help you out a little bit.
I don't think Mr. Flanagan is expecting only 75, although that might be, right, the trend and, and Mr. Parag is going off of, right, the industry standard.
I'm going off of other rentals in the city.
Looking to allow for second and third vehicles. Um, whereas, right, you can only drive one car at a time, but I wanna keep my Jaguar, right?
I would appreciate Mr. Flanagan just providing a number so we can put this one to bed.
Sure.
Yes, if I can recall, Mr. Flanagan, to respond to the question as to why we're going to the added expense of putting in the triple stackers rather than the just two stackers. And if you did two stackers, then you end up with 99 parking spaces and your ordinance requires 96. So you're really tight in, in that number.
All right, Mr. Flanagan, labor his point, please.
You're up there still, Mr. Parag.
I, I appreciate the questions. Uh, the, the, the true reason for wanting to, to add that extra level is so that people don't spill out into neighborhood. The, the neighborhoods already tight. We've been in Summit for 50 years. We already know that the neighborhood's tight. The neighborhood is tight for parking. Um, it's an ongoing thing in the city of Summit that people park in streets, people get annoyed about other people parking in front of their houses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The last that we wanna do is exacerbate that situation in a part of town that doesn't have it as bad, even though they think they have it bad, they don't have it as bad as up here in town. So that was really the main reason. It would actually be easier for us to do the double parking. We wouldn't have to go through the fire prevention things. We wouldn't have to do a lot of, the expense would be significantly lower. Um, the other thing is, is that this is going to be a, you know, our plan, our vision for this is this is to be a luxury apartment building. Um, generally speaking, the wealthier people will have at least two cars. They may have three cars. Uh, as you may or may not know, I'm in the auto industry and Aston Martin is one of my, one of my dealerships, and we have people that have 80 cars. Um, and so for them to wanna have two or three of their nice cars close to them, they very well may wanna have that. Um, I'm more than happy to encourage them to buy several Aston Martins from me, so, uh, that may be part of the deal there, so.
Well, if I'm ever in the market, it's helpful enough.
I know someone.
That's right.
He's, he's a movie star. You saw him on the screen before.
There we go. So based upon all of that, you know, where would you place the number in terms of utilization?
Initially, I would say we will probably be somewhere in that 90-ish range. That's my guesstimate. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have the data that he has, um, but I, that would be my guesstimate, would be originally, we'd probably be in that 90, but we would anticipate that to grow probably to about 125. But again, if someone was going to be having, let's say, you know, let's say somebody has a birthday party, right, and they, they're gonna invite 10 people that bring six cars. Um, you know, what I don't want to happen is I don't want the parking in front of Mr. Nelson's house. That's really what I don't want to happen. And so that's the, and we, we both, that, that's, you know, we're, we're not buying this property to then flip it and sell it like Toll Brothers or anybody else. We're, we're part of the town. We want this to work in this part of the town. We see this part of the town growing and developing, and that's the reason why we wanna give it ample everything that it can have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
You're safe for now.
Good.
Further testimony, or we're just, we're just gonna resolve these questions, then hopefully move to the next component?
I have no further questions.
Okay, there's no further, yeah, testimony. Anything you wanna add, Mr. Snake? Thank you very much. Any other questions from members of the board for traffic? Okay, Mr. Nelson, Karthik? Yeah, you're welcome. Please come forward. And any other members of the interested public, though I suspect everyone's on the Flanagan payroll over there, so. That's right.
Karthik Jharab, 11 Plain Street. I wanted to ask a couple of questions regarding your existing traffic volumes that you've coded here.
Sure.
Now, it wasn't mentioned about a lot of redevelopment that's happening around town, so I kinda find traffic studies a little interesting, so a bit of a data geek, so I kinda find these numbers very fascinating. Um, so I know each traffic study kind of like looks at it a little differently. Uh, in your, um, report, for the manual turning movements, you noted that this has been observed on April 5th between 7:00 and 9:00 and 4:30 and 6:30. Um, some reports I've seen where, um, observations have been made over a few days and averages taken. Did you ever consider doing that when you did this traffic study?
We did. We, we did actually three days. We did February, April, and then we went back out when the new signal went in to confirm there, so in May. All consistent data points. But typically, no, for a development this small, we would not do more than one day of counts. In this case, we happened to do three, and had DOT pre-pandemic data that all matches up.
The second question was around the pre-pandemic dates. I know you had mentioned that, um, the data that you looked at was from April 2017.
Yeah.
How do you gonna select a date when you talk about like pre-pandemic? Because I know I stopped going into work February of 2020. Um, so just curious, like, why April 2017 and not like dates before or after that?
That's just what, the, the DOT has count stations. They'll put out the tubes in the road and count the cars. The, the closest one here, the most recent data they have was 2017. I grew that by 1% per year to get to 2022 and then did the factoring. So I'm probably overestimated in what I'm using in here, but that's the procedure.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify if April 2017 was the closest date that you had.
It was.
Or there were other dates available. And you also mentioned about refactoring it, kind of growing it over year on year. Um, and the report mentioned specifically the NJ dot annual background growth rate table that was referred. Um, I was innately curious because it said it's a 1% per year. Um, so I wanted to see like, you know, is it always 1% everywhere throughout New Jersey or if it's different? Um, so I kind of like went a little bit on Google search to see what was actually available. And the first link that, when I did it, went to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. There was a little grid.
Starting to, uh, Mr. Chairman, move off the plate.
Right.
Um, the question was, um, there was the, the table that is being referred to showed there was 1% growth that can be accounted for, but there was also a statement made under the table that said it's only for short-term or background growth and short-term growth for one to three years. Um, but in your case, I know you've taken that and multiplied it over. over five years. So kind of curious like how that's going to be, is it valid or what's the basis of using that projection?
It's certainly an over-projection. The 1% per year is a short-term rate because if you wanted to say, what's the traffic going to be like in 10 years and you had a 1%, times 10, it would get out of control. So that's why they say only three years. So I recognize that I'm overestimating, but I want to be conservative. I want to look at the worst case. So I'm probably too high, but that's okay.
Okay. I mean, I guess the other question that I had was similar to that, which was on the future growth. And I know you referred to that same table and projected like again a 1% growth. I don't know how long this has been projected to, but that's something I just wanted to kind of mention that the table says it's 1% for two to three years, but it has been used for across a number of years. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Yep. And that's thanks to the pandemic. Normally, we use it for the short term, like going from existing to future, but unfortunately, we have to try to be realistic and hope that everybody goes back to normal and this is all over. It may not happen.
All right. Thank you very much.
I got used to ordering groceries online. I'm not sure about everybody else.
I'm not sure if everyone could hear you, Mr. Paragoy.
I said, I got used to ordering groceries online. I'm not sure about everybody else, but I think overall, there's going to be a long-term impact from COVID on traffic volumes.
Is that accounted for within your study that there is an increase in work from home?
No, I have anything the opposite. I have more traffic than probably we're going to get to for a while.
Mr. Nelson, any questions from you?
Sure.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. When you did your traffic study, you did not expand to other intersections to rate those. Why? Other than the fact that they're your clients and you're only concentrating on this, but?
Objection to that.
Could you answer the gentleman's question, right?
For a development this size, like I said, we typically wouldn't even do counts or a traffic study. We might just look at the driveway. We had the signal right nearby, so we did look at that. When you get beyond that, the traffic impact from this is diluted. Some people get to River Road, they turn right, some turn left. So if my maximum impact is at this next intersection and it's showing no impact, then it's going to be even less than anything.
And just a real silly question. Where do we anticipate the valets to park?
They'll park in the level.
All right.
They'll be helicoptered in.
All right. Anything further with regard to traffic testimony, Mr. Whoever you'd like to present?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your input on traffic. Let's take a quick five-minute recess, stretch our legs, and then hear from some planning. Thank you very much.
The best part of the chat.
We're missing a couple lawyers. There we go. We're back at full lawyer strength.
Full training.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Webber.
I would ask that Mr. Paul Phillips be called to the stand to be sworn in to give testimony in this matter.
And if you raise your hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Paul Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Sure. I'm a principal in the firm of Phillips Price. Been practicing as a planner in New Jersey for approximately 40 years. Licensed professional planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I do hold a master's degree in urban planning from our college. My firm advises several dozen municipalities and boards in New Jersey on planning zoning, redevelopment, and affordable housing. I've appeared and been accepted as an expert in more than 250 municipalities in the state. I've appeared on a number of occasions and been accepted by this particular board, as well as on numerous occasions in the Superior Court of New Jersey.
And any questions from the board? Would you like to accept his credentials once again?
He's done this before. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, are you familiar with the application that's currently pending before the board?
I am.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
So I undertook a number of tasks, including a, I participated actually in the evolution of the plans, which are before the board this evening. I also had occasion on several instances to visit the site and survey the adjacent uses. I reviewed the city's land development ordinance and zoning map and also the master plan documentation, reviewed the reports of the board professionals. And while I was not in attendance, I did view the YouTube videos of the two brother hearings on this application.
And have you prepared a report and have you formed an opinion as a planner with regard to the application that's currently pending before the board?
Yes, I have formed such an opinion.
And are you ready to present that opinion to the board?
I am.
Would you please?
Sure. So regarding first, the proposal and zoning compliance, as you've heard, this application is for a 52-unit multifamily residential building. It's proposed on a 1.15 acre assemblage located near the intersection of Morris Avenue and River Road. The property, as you've also heard, is in the NB Neighborhood Business District. That district does allow upper-level apartments. However, only the non-residential uses that are prescribed in the NB zone are allowed on the ground floor. Again, as you've heard over the course of the testimony, in addition to lobby and amenities space, there are ground floor residential units proposed. Ergo, we're before you first for a D1 use variance for that reason. We also are seeking a D4 Florida ratio variance. The NB zone has a limit of 75%. And as has been represented, the applicant is seeking an FAR equal to 112.8%. There are also a number of C bulk variance requests. They've been actually largely addressed by both the site engineer and architect, but I will also weigh in at least on the majority of those from a planning standpoint as well. So with that preamble, I'd like to start with the D1 use variance. Board is aware of the criteria. An applicant has to basically advance positive and negative criteria. On the positive side, there must be special reasons in support of the D1 variance. And an applicant must also demonstrate to your satisfaction that the site is particularly suitable for what's proposed. With regard to the negative criteria, the applicant has to, again, affirmatively demonstrate to your satisfaction that the granting of the variance will not result in substantial detriment to public good or substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And if that's not enough, with regard to the negative criteria based on the 1987 New Jersey Supreme Court case known as Medici, fondly by attorneys and planners, the applicant must sort of specifically reconcile the granting of the variance with the fact that the underlying zoning doesn't contemplate the use. And again, it's important to consider here, the use is strictly the residential or non-residential on the ground floor as has been proposed. With regard to special reasons, I really see this as sort of a unique development tract, not only based on its locational and physical characteristics, but also in the context of the city's larger Neighborhood Business District. First of all, as I mentioned, the overall site assemblage is over an acre in size. That's extraordinary for most NB zone lots citywide, where the properties are for the most part much smaller in size, and they're largely surrounded on all or most sides by residential development, typically single-family residential development. Secondly, this property, as you've heard, is located essentially at the intersection of Morris Avenue and River Road, where again the built character is very different from what this NB zone envisions. And what the NB zone envisions is small-scale convenience retail with apartments above in certain circumstances. I think the existing development, as I see it, that frames this intersection, basically includes the Bristol Myers Squibb. It would include the Sunrise Assisted Living, and I think it would include the Smythe Volvo as well. And again, particularly concentrated at that intersection. Third, an additional access point, meaning one access point or multiple access points for any type of as-zone commercial development or even mixed commercial residential development, which again, the zoning envisions, I think would be challenging given the proximity of this tract to the intersection. And any of those scenarios would add more traffic to the adjacent street system than it exclusively residential development has proposed before this board. Fourth, adding a significant amount of new commercial development at this location, in my opinion, is problematic, given sort of the state of brick-and-mortar retailing. And I think that's only been exacerbated by the pandemic. And I think in that vein, you would have to consider that any ground floor retail space here, either in a single building or multiple buildings, would compete in particular with the promenade next door. Also, I think as you heard from our architect, the change in grade on the site as it drops down toward River Road does not lend itself to ground floor retail. I would agree with that opinion, all else being equal. So I don't see it in sort of the best interests of the public at large to actually encourage retail at this location essentially for those reasons. On the contrary, I think a multifamily residential use with a single access point represents a particularly good fit for this tract. For one, the market for this kind of housing product has been described by the applicant continues to be strong, whereas, as I mentioned, I think the demand for retail space in a somewhat off-the-beaten location is probably not strong. Secondly, an exclusively multifamily residential development scheme is not only advantageous from a trip generation standpoint, but I think it's advantageous considering the site's proximity, again, to the intersection itself, where you want to basically avoid in particular multiple access points. And also, the access you have to consider is also close to the promenade as well as Bristol Myers Squibb directly across the street. I think the point that I'm trying to make is that the fewer conflicts, the better from an overall traffic impact standpoint. And the exclusively multifamily residential basically would generate fewer trips than compared to any as-zoned development and in particular, a wholly commercial development, which the NB zoning allows if not encourages. I also see this property as a gateway site or gateway location within the city. And I see it as sort of almost the last piece of the recent puzzle in terms of the development that's either occurring or has occurred at this particular intersection. And again, I don't view the specific NB zone requirements as being particularly appropriate for this location or this tract. And I think this site, this surrounding development context, again, is very different from other NB zone districts throughout Summit. And again, I think you want to avoid smaller buildings. As you know, there's, and I'll get to this because it's a C variance, but there's a cap on the size of the building in this district. I think you actually want to avoid smaller buildings with multiple curb cuts and more intensive trip generation on this particular site. So I think bottom line, given the adjacent development context, given the proximity of the, to the intersection, given access and traffic concerns, and also market considerations, I think allowing the ground floor residential here in lieu of retail business, and again, as part of a single development project, actually makes eminent planning sense where this tract in particular, again, in my opinion. In terms of the purposes of the municipal land use law, which I think would be advanced, I think there are at least four. Purpose A, which is to guide development in a manner that promotes the public welfare. Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Purpose H, which is promoting the free flow of traffic. And lastly, Purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment. In terms of the negative criteria, I honestly don't see any undue impacts on neighboring properties from a land use impact standpoint. And again, relative to as-zoned development. And I would just point out in that regard that any new development has an impact. The test is basically whether that impact rises to the level of being substantially detrimental in nature. Again, multifamily preferable from a traffic impact standpoint. I don't see any detrimental impacts on the promenade directly next door. And I think the multifamily scenario will actually have a lesser impact on the adjacent homes on Plain Street as there's no commercial use, no commercial deliveries, no potential nighttime operations for commercial, no surface parking for commercial that could impact these immediate neighbors on Plain Street to the rear. I think the applicant has also designed the project to afford protection to the neighbors on Plain Street by essentially burying the parking, providing a large building setback, and also providing the appropriate decorative fencing and landscape buffering. And again, keep in mind, this is important, that the three-story building with upper-floor residential is already permitted in this zone. The real issue we hear on the D1 variance is to basically switch out or change the commercial on the ground floor to allow for the residential use. In terms of zone planning tax and Medici, again, as I said, I think this is a unique tract in the context of the majority of NB zone lands in the city of Summit. Again, generally smaller parcels, limited depth, single retail uses completely surrounded, a little nodes basically, within larger single-family residential districts. I think that, again, from a master planning perspective, and the last master plan is now the reexamination, about five or six years old, you know, you look at what's on the site now and there are, you know, five dwellings, one of which has been converted to commercial use. That's actually permitted in the NB district. And I think, you know, the concerns that have been expressed when you really get into the weeds on this site in terms of access and traffic and so forth, probably were not taken into consideration as a part of the 2016 master plan. If you actually look at the sections on the NB zone, the recommendations are more generic than sort of site or location-specific. They talk about improving walkability and maintaining a good design and so forth. And again, it's been five or six years since the last reexamination and there have been some changed circumstances. One, obviously, is you now have before you a one-plus-acre assemblage, which is available for redevelopment on this site. And then secondly, the retail environment, I think, has only gotten worse over the past five or six years and again, mostly post-pandemic. So I think for all these reasons, I think the D1 use variance can be granted without compromising the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zone ordinance. And again, particularly as it relates to the NB zoning. I mentioned the FAR variance. The board has obviously heard D4 variance cases. The seminal case in New Jersey is the Randolph Town Center case. And the court in that case essentially said that an applicant for a D4 variance need not show that the site is particularly suited for more intense development. Rather, the applicant has to show that the site can accommodate any problems that might be associated with a larger FAR than again permitted by ordinance. And with that said, I would just first proffer that FAR is a regulatory zoning tool that is used primarily to regulate is used primarily to regulate the intensity of development on a site, and secondarily to control the bulk or mass of a building or buildings. And that 75% limit, I would presume, takes into account that this zoning allows either all commercial or a portion of the building or development to be commercial. And that kind of standard is, again, intended to limit intensity, and by intensity, it's everything from traffic to parking to turnover. I think that's the main point of an FAR variance. Again, with all multifamily here, and vis a vis that standard, I think that certainly any problems can be overcome with regard to that part of the test. With regard to building bulk or mass, this applicant is indeed proposing a larger building than what the zoning allows. I think there's several factors that should be considered in that regard. First, again, as I mentioned, the immediate neighborhood context includes relatively large buildings. I would especially look to the Sunrise Assisted Living Facility. I think that's a good point of comparison, because the uses are somewhat similar. It's assisted living, but it's sort of a residential product, and the design is somewhat similar in terms of, I see that as a residential design. That FAR at Sunrise is 113%, basically the same FAR that the applicant is proposing here. Second, I think with the mass or bulk of the building, you have to consider the building architecture and the building aesthetics and the building articulation and the treatment of materials. They all come into play in evaluating a request for increased floor area. And here, I think the design has been described, is basically been intended to, and I think achieves, breaking up the bulk and the mass of the building. And then, lastly, I think what's a mitigating factor, a key mitigating factor here, is the overall project design, which calls for almost all the parking to be accommodated under buildings, not exposed to the neighboring residential properties on Plain Street in particular. The development is also well below the allowable coverage in the district, which I think is similarly beneficial. And then, lastly, and very importantly, there's an enhanced setback of this building to the common rear lot line of the residence on Plain Street. And you've heard from other witnesses that bulk of the building facing Plain Street is set back almost 86 and change, feet and change. The smallest portion closest to River Road is about 33 feet. There's no rear yard setback in the NB district. So I think the applicant, again, notwithstanding the request for the increase in FAR, has been sensitive in terms of the design to the adjoining residential properties in particular. And, and lastly, I'll cover the C or most of them. I'm not going to belabor some, some of the testimony of other witnesses. I think they've covered it adequately. But I think number one is, to a large extent, they're subsumed within their request for the D1 use variance. Certainly, the requirement that no single building in the zone be greater than 10,000 square feet, that's subsumed, in my opinion, within their request for the D1 variance. And I think that, again, that goes to the uniqueness of this large development tract within the context of the zone. Interestingly, there's no minimum lot size in the NB zone. So while the 10,000-square-foot threshold may make sense for a smaller lot, this would not be the case for a larger lot such as this. And again, I keep getting back to the build context. All of the immediately surrounding buildings at the intersection, including the promenade on the other side, are well in excess of 10,000 square feet. You've heard, they're maybe 50,000 to 60,000 square feet in, excuse me, in size. So I see this as a C2 variance, as sort of a better planning zoning alternative for this tract. Ms. Dougherty covered the issue of, there's a required roof pitch. Here, it's a flat roof design, it was deliberate, based on the neighborhood context, the architectural design, and again, the desire to provide for rooftop amenities. I see this as a C2 variance as well. Building coverage, just slightly, 39.8% is proposed, 30% is required. And again, I think this relates to the overall design, which is intended to keep the parking out of view and to limit the amount of surface parking nearest the adjacent single-family on Plain Street. Again, a benefit. And it also affords, as I mentioned, the opportunity for the applicant to be well within the 90% lot coverage for the zone. Again, I also see this as a C2 variance. I think Ms. Dougherty covered the two, I guess, nuances related to the height exceptions with regard to the measurement from the lowest elevation on site to the highest point of the roof and then the rooftop occurrences. I think she appropriately addressed that. I would defer, actually, to her testimony as to the rationale for those variances. And I think the last one that I'll just comment on is the buffer. And seven and a half feet is provided, whereas 10 feet is required. To some extent, I think it may be driven by the limited depth of the property, but I think, again, recognize that the largest section of this building, at roughly 87 feet setback from the rear lot line, really, I think, is a key mitigating factor here. And as you heard, the applicant is proposing a large arbivites in this buffer area to provide a dense form of planting to stream the properties. And I think there are seven, eight feet of planting, as I recall. And then, you also heard this evening, and I'm not going to belabor it, it's better covered by our engineer, the issue with regard to the relief for the lighting height. I really don't have anything to add there. And Mr. Weber, I think I kind of covered everything from a planning standpoint at this point.
If you can, just a couple of points. You talked about the fact that by adding commercial at this site, you're going to end up competing with the promenade's litany of shops. What about, isn't there a business district further down on the, as you head east on Morris Avenue?
There is. The NB zone does continue on east along Morris Avenue. And yes, to that extent, it would compete with that district as well. And again, the way I see it and what I experienced, both representing applicants as well as my boards, retail has probably been as challenging as I've seen it in my 40-year professional career. And I have been, as part of my due diligence to the promenade in particular at several occasions, and there I have seen, you know, one or two vacancies in the promenade. And I think the last thing that the city wants to see is basically additional vacancies in either one or both of these projects. Or to basically potentially cannibalize those other areas further to the east on Morris Avenue.
And then, you referred to the other NB zones throughout the city as islands, if you will, surrounded by residential. And this one, if I'm not mistaken, this NB zone goes from the diner and wraps around the intersection and continues down past Plain Street and into that business, the NB zone, further. So it acts as, I mean, is it a protective, is it transitional? How's your, how's that view in terms of what it's done to protect the residential neighborhood?
So, I mean, the zones, for the most part, the NB zones, such as on the east side of town and ones on some of the borders where the community is, are small little nodes with not many properties surrounded by residential. Here, it's a little bit more extensive. But as I see it, it's been designed and zoned in terms of the uses and the bulk requirements for the most part to actually afford an appropriate transition to the residential that surrounds it, and I don't see anything really different in that respect with regard to the area that you mentioned that goes all the way down, I guess, to the diner along River Road.
Mm-hmm. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions. Thank you for your testimony. With regard to your testimony, you talked about this is a unique site and as it compares to other NB zone properties, but yet, this is an assemblage of properties, right?
It is.
Currently, several lots that are being assembled together. So why does that create a uniqueness at this location? You're assembling those properties together. You're saying it's unique, but yet, why would that relate to the overall review from a variance standpoint?
So a couple of things. As I look at the other, for the most part, the other NB zones, the way they're laid out, the size of the lots, the, basically, they're located as little nodes, I don't see the same opportunity to basically advance an assemblage at those other sites that I can see here, number one. I think an assemblage makes sense at this site to do a project that can mirror and echo what's been fairly recently built at this particular intersection. And I think what's critical, as I see it here, is that the NB zone purpose and regulations, which are smaller sort of convenience, retail development, with or without residential on the upper floors, to me, with multiple curb cuts and additional traffic, which makes no sense from a planning standpoint at, at this particular location. And I think the assemblage gives the property or the ability to do something that makes sense in the context, and then importantly, do it as part of a single point of access near this critical intersection to serve a use which I think is appropriate and which is a relatively benign traffic generator compared to what you could do as-zone.
Speaking, speaking to as-zone with commercial on the first floor, and if the site was a mixed-use type of facility, you made certain conclusions based on trip generation and traffic analysis in comparison, although I didn't hear any of that testimony from the traffic engineer. Could you just expand on that, why you arrived at that opinion?
Well, then, we do have that information. We can recall the traffic engineer and then move it ahead that way, so we can answer that question.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just say that within that-
I know you have experience, so that's why-
Well, but, but no, within that context, and you're going to hear from our traffic engineer, who actually did some comparative analysis to what we're proposing as-zone, and you will see that there's a significant difference in the levels of traffic with regard to either as-zone with residential or as-zone or commercial relative to an exclusively 52-unit multifamily building.
Okay, I think that's important to have a word to hear. Would you want to do that now?
Yeah, I'll just stand by.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Alfonso, are we going to be able to put the exhibit up? Thank you.
This exhibit's not going to be worth the wait, I can promise you. Ms. Alfonso has the hardest job of all of you guys, so cut her some slack here.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there you go. You see the table up there, the top is permitted. Those are permitted uses with compliant FAR in this, on this conglomeration of properties that was put together by the architect and the, and the engineer, and I ran the traffic numbers for those. And you can see, I don't know if we need to go through each one, but you can see that each one is, is certainly more intensive. All right, sure, we'll go through each one. Top one, 19 units with the ground floor retail, which is sort of what, I guess, the zone envisions. You'd see it's 62 morning peak hour trips and 127 in the PM. Remember, I told you that 100 is the significant number, so we could potentially see an impact in the PM peak hour there. You've got about 17,000 and change of retail, the 41 morning trips and 115 PM, again, you know, decently more than what's proposed. You do a two-story office building, 37,000 square feet, you'd have 72 mornings, 74 PM trips there, again, higher. And then, the biggest one, 17,000 square feet of restaurant space. That's a big restaurant. I'd envision that as maybe possibly two restaurants, but that's, that's a big traffic generator and permitted and within the FAR. 165 trips in the morning, assuming you serve breakfast, and 156 in the evening. So all of those scenarios show you that there are higher numbers that, that we could be in front of the planning board with.
And those are all based on standard IT methodology?
All the same way, yes.
Has that methodology been revised since the pandemic?
Yes. We're on the 11th edition of it now, and the 11th edition of it is, the data's pre-pandemic, but there's commentary on how to treat COVID-19 adjustments and things like that in there.
Could you summarize how the different types of uses have been changed? Like, I would assume office use has maybe gone down a little bit.
Office has gone down. The expectation, though, is that it's going to go up per square foot. The rate will go up, because they're going to be more tightly packed and less people in, in the office is the idea. It's, they have a whole discussion on that, and it's very, very strange. But residential has stayed very steady in terms of trip generation. And then, you know, your, your retail is what's expected to go lower, your, your, you know, in-person shopping is what we're going to see the drop in. The data that they've published is all from accounts taken before the pandemic, but there's, you know, a commentary what, what to expect in the future.
Was the general conclusion more people staying at home?
I mean, when, when they wrote that in probably mid, you know, just after this whole thing started, probably August 2020, I think it came out, I'm sure that was at the forefront. Seems, I don't know, for me personally, I feel like things are getting a little bit back to the normal way, but might have been a little more doom and gloom in there than is actually happening.
Thank you.
If I could recall then?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question regarding this while you're here.
Yeah, please.
Sure. So the numbers you showed there are all based on the footprint or what is sort of the square footage that might fit on this property?
Correct, yes.
Is that what that was?
Yes.
Okay, what, based on the building size that's here or something similar to that?
Yes, in this case, based on building size, and, you know, for residential, it's based on the number of units, not the square footage, but for offices and retail.
And so each one of the line items are examples of tests you've done for the various levels of traffic?
Correct. If I was doing a traffic report for any of these, that's the numbers that would be in my trip generation table.
And this is something that's been submitted to the board or will be submitted to the board?
Yes.
Just for the record.
We have not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
This will be A23.
That you have.
Correct, A23.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe, Mr. Phillips, sorry, just on this point, so I understand the argument that's being made here, is that the diminished traffic as opposed to, well, for this particular application, as opposed to other permitted uses, is a compelling beneficial outcome of potentially approving this application.
Correct.
And, and we're to, to go further with that, though, we're to consider that with respect to other potentially beneficial uses of this site. So for example, you could dedicate some portion of that ground, ground floor, not to residential units, but to a daycare, for example, which would offer a more substantial, compelling beneficial use. There's gradations to beneficial use. I don't mean to make your argument for you, Mr. Weber or Mr. Phillips, but just want to kind of contextualize this benefit.
Yes, the, as the trip generation that was performed, preparation for the redo of the application, that came to that, that pointed that out then. Putting aside the fact that you want more offices, certainly a restaurant there would be problematic. I know that Marco Polo is still open, but I'm not sure that it's generating a lot of activity right now. So, and retail, obviously. You have a retail district there, you have it right next door on the promenade. There's a couple Asian stores, there's a couple Asian restaurants, there's one in the prom, adding another one is just really, as I think Mr. Phillips has made clear, cannibalizing what's there. I don't know if adding the 52 units will help those businesses or not. I don't know if that helps to invigorate that area, but I would think that, I would hope so.
Well, it certainly doesn't hurt- Well, it certainly doesn't hurt because there's sort of a built-in market in that respect. And, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would add is that if, with your example of daycare, daycare generates traffic as well.
Sure, though it's considered under case law as inherently beneficial and particularly attractive in the weight of the board.
Yeah.
An imperfect example, but something to think about. Mr. Snickers, you have some additional follow-up?
Just going back now to the testimony regarding the FAR of the proposed building. I know you provided your testimony regarding the difference of the 75% to 112% that's provided. And you bound, you reviewed both items of intensity of use as well as the bulk of the building as part of your argument. And I can understand the intensity of use as it relates to retail. I think, in your professional opinion, how do you feel as far as the intensity of use from a residential standpoint?
Well, certainly compared to as zoned, the intensity of residential use and particularly the way this project is designed, meaning keeping the parking basically screened or buried, I think compares much more favorably to either the ground floor, commercial, residential above, or even more so to an all commercial development in terms of intensity, because you're going to get more trips, more parking, more potentially adverse impacts to the residences in the rear. So I think this is sort of a good fit in terms of intensity of use. You've heard the, the trip generation, and again, the way the project's been designed, the enhanced setbacks to, away from that rear lot line, and the fact that there's essentially, you know, again, the buried parking and just the visitor parking on the surface, which will be screened. I think in terms of intensity, that basically speaks well, again, both relative to the underlying zoning as well as with regard to potential impacts on neighbors.
Then also, as part of that test, you looked at the bulk and mass of the building. One thing that I'm just troubled by is the overall 37% increase above the 75% that's permitted, and making sure that that's, from your professional opinion, how is that not of substantial impact to the intent of the bulk and mass on the property?
So, as I indicated, it, you know, I don't know if I consider it substantial going from, you know, the 75 to 113, that, you know, we can debate that, and people have their own opinion. As I mentioned, it is more than what the zoning allows, but again, I think there's some mitigating factors, and I think you have to look at the underlying context here as to kind of what's been built in terms of the size of the buildings. And I would agree with Mr. Weber that the Bristol Myers Squibb Building is, you know, double the size, but it's on a larger tract, so it's a little bit of apples and oranges, which is one of the reasons that I went where I was particularly interested in seeing what the FAR was of Sunrise, because again, although it's assisted living, it's kind of a similar residential design, and there are residents, there are occupants. And interestingly, that was 113%, essentially the same as proposed here. But then, I think you have to look at mitigating factors. I think you have to look at the overall design, which I think is attractive. I think the architect has done well to articulate and break down the mass of the building. I think that weighs into play as the board considers whether or not to grant the FAR variance. And then again, you have to look at the whole project design, which again, is intended to limit impacts particularly to the neighbors in the rear. I think that comes into play. I think the board can consider it and should consider it. And in particular, again, that enhanced building setback, where no rear yard setback is required in the NB district and the way this has been designed with an 86, 87-foot setback. So yeah, the building is larger than what's contemplated, but based on the context and based on the design and the particulars in terms of the surrounding development, I think that all comes into play, and that's how I, that's how I viewed it, Ed.
Okay. You had indicated also as part of that view, that you looked at the overall coverage factor, and you felt it was well below the standards. You didn't mean the building coverage, right? It was more of the overall total site coverage?
So, it, I meant, and I apologize, I wanted to make it clear, it's a lot coverage, the allowable in the district is 90%, and I think we're roughly at about 75, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But yet, the application needs a variance for the overall building coverage as well, right?
Yeah, yeah. And again, as I mentioned, I think the, the factors to consider there are, again, the design and the things that I just advanced in weighing the, the building coverage being 9% more than what the ordinance allows. And I think as part of that comparison, you can compare the reduced lot coverage relative to what the zoning allows as well. I think that comes into the mix.
Okay. When you talk about context, you were talking about the localized context of the site, but yet, most of the other buildings that you referred to, I say most, I know some are, they're not in the same zone, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And by the way, that is why I think this is unique. This assemblage is unique in the context of the larger NB district. I see its characteristics, and I'm not going to rehash everything I said, as being different from the bulk of the NB zone properties, not only in this area, but citywide.
Okay. And that's also the context by which you talk about the subsuming of the variances relative specifically to maximum building size. One of the things the NB zone, I think, I feel, I agree with you, was trying to do is to establish smaller types of buildings within that zone. But yet, I believe from your professional opinion, you were talking about this location specifically is unique from that standpoint.
Correct. And by the way, as I look at the NB zone standards relative to the bulk of the properties that are zoned NB, and particularly those nodes that I mentioned, it makes sense at those locations. That zoning makes sense at those locations. Here, with this particular tract, I think, again, this plan is a, is a better alternative for all the reasons that I expressed.
Okay. Under the last two questions I have is regarding the buffer along the rear of the property, seven and a half feet compared to 10. One thing that I saw that was rather compelling in the regulations, it talks about no less than 10 feet be allowed. Why should this board approve something less than 10 feet? I think you provided some testimony, but I just wanted to revisit that real quickly.
So again, I, my testimony with regard to the buffer really goes typically, not only is the depth somewhat limited, the applicant could potentially have met 10 feet, but I think, again, the key factor here is that you've got to look at the overall design and building placement and where this applicant has placed this building to respect those neighbors when he could basically put it, if I read the ordinance, Ed, within 10 feet, but basically at the buffer line. I mean, and three stories is allowed, we're not seeking the, you know, above the 42-foot height, so I think with all that into consideration, a somewhat reduced buffer to take that into account, but with dense plantings and, and the decorative fence, I think, makes sense and I think is adequate and appropriate.
If I can follow up with the point that Mr. Snickers has made, Mr. Phillips, if I can draw the attention to the DRO and the D, the regulations with regard to the NB zone, and I show that at page 172 of my paper copy. It sets forth, "A five-foot landscape buffer shall be required along the rear property line. If parking is located in the rear, this buffer shall be in addition to requirements of 35, 14L and P below." So, in that regard, they're looking at that landscape buffer as five feet. What the applicant has done here is to go directly to the other standard, generally within the DRO, and set that as a standard. And that's consistent with the whole approach that this is something that we're not going to put commercial on the first floor. It doesn't make any sense to do that. We're going to go residential, and as a result, that's why that other standard is set. But there is something here in the NB zone where it says your five foot is your buffer.
And the other thing, Ed, to consider is, is that, and I think Jim raises a good point, if you were to develop this as zone and you can, as I said, do all commercial with parking in the rear, you would, in my mind, need that larger buffer than under this particular design scenario, all residential and essentially the parking being below the building.
Because the parking is below the building.
Yeah, exactly. And you don't have that constant activity of rear commercial parking backing up against the residences in the, in the rear, which you could do under a commercial, as-zone commercial scenario.
In fact, doesn't the NB zone actually want the buildings forward and they want the parking in the back?
That's correct.
And so for the neighbors on Plain Street, that would be the area of greater activity, that'd be the area of where you're five feet with the buffer and the activity of commercial activity. Did I just say that twice?
You did.
It's getting late. Trump is.
The last thing I had to cover was, I'm not sure we talked about, and if I, if I'm not mistaken, there was a variance needed for fence height, is that right? We're going to six feet or to four feet?
I think, and you know what? We need to, but I think, is it a portion of the six feet in the, there's a small portion, sort of technical, there's a small portion in the, in the front yard.
Just wanted to verify.
Yeah, I think we still need that, Josh?
That actually was requested by Chris Anderson, who wrote this letter, "We revise plans to comply with the text."
Oh, so we're out.
Complies.
We're out.
Okay, thank you.
And I know at one point it was in, a portion of it was in.
I think there's also a steep slope disturbance?
That's correct. You touched on that at some point last night.
You did?
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Marie, this isn't necessarily your part of the, anybody anything to note that you want to draw attention to? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, board questions for the planner. Takeers? Tom, you've got copious notes.
Yes, for later.
Okay. Jamie?
Actually, I would like to see the site plan and just have you point out the buffer area you were talking about, as well as the 86-foot, your rear yard setback.
We can get that up.
Actually, if it's easier, if you could just describe what exists on the site plan between the building and the start of the Plain Street residential lots to the rear.
Yeah.
I think she has it there. If you could just describe what is there again, please.
So, as you can see, there's sort of two separate parts of the building that back up to the rear lot lines of the houses on Plain Street. This lesser setback, which is the portion of building closest to River Road, that's roughly, and I'm rounding, about 33 feet. And then the larger setback to that main portion of the rear exposure of the building is just under 87 feet. And then, in the intervening area, what you have is the visitor parking, and then behind that, you have the circulation down to the garage. And then, we can see the little green, that's the plantings, in the seven and a half-foot buffer area on the other side essentially of that access way down to the garage.
Do you, go ahead.
And there's also this, the six-foot board-on-board fence.
Correct.
Do you anticipate residents, children, dogs using that grassy area where the setback is smaller there?
Would you just stand up so that you could respond to the board members' questions and we can, then you could be heard? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board?
You know, actually, I do have one question. It'll kind of tip off where I'm leaning, is that a bit, first of all? Okay. So, I'll come right out and say it, that I'm, I don't like the D4 variance request. I'm also concerned about the, I mean, the D1 use variance request, I'm most concerned about the D4 FAR request. I'm wondering if there's anything you, the applicant, could consider offering to add a positive to what I think is the major negative of the D1 use variance, which goes against the goals of the master plan. I mean, I know you tried to make a very good argument that it really doesn't, but, you know, there's nothing in the master plan which says, "We want neighborhood businesses except here," or "except," you know, it just says, "We want neighborhood businesses on the first floor." Is there anything you can offer in terms of an additional positive that might help, you know, make me comfortable with that, with that grant?
Is that to me or to the applicant?
Or applicant, whoever, whoever wants to tackle it, I don't know.
That'll be you, Mr. Phillips.
So, look, I, you know, I represent municipalities, I write master plans, I do reexamination reports. I will tell you that very often, and particularly at the reexamination level, you never capture every particular circumstance and fact pattern when you do a, a master plan. And the way I look at this particular property in terms of the zoning, I think it has historically been NB. I think, and I can't speak for the master planners, but I've done enough of these that, you know, there were five dwellings, basically, or former dwellings here, which is allowed under the NB, it looked like it was fine. But the question is, is that something that you want to see going into the future? I can tell you my professional opinion, I think a continuation of the one and two-family residences or the converted, I don't think it makes sense at that location at all. If I then turn to the NB zoning in terms of, you know, redevelopment, small R redevelopment of the, of the assemblage, I just don't think you want to have more retail there. I don't think you want to have, you know, small retail sites with multiple curb cuts. I, I see this as an opportunity, and I, you know, I understand, you know, you may have issues with the D4 and the, the footprint of the building and the size of the building, but in my opinion, the, the D1, and I don't mean to be flip, but I think the D1's almost a no-brainer here, based upon, you know, what I see and, and based upon my own experience. But obviously, you sit on the board and make the decisions, and I don't. And I don't know what else I have to offer to you, other than, I think, compared to what the zoning envisions, I think this is a much more preferable plan.
So, Tom, I want to continue on your line of questioning, so it's not lost, but just to pause kind of at an intermediary point. This is a question either, I'd say, for Ed or maybe even for Andy, is, I could see an argument made that combining these lots, changing the use, increasing the density through the FAR variance is, I mean, we're changing the nature of the, of the zone. We're impairing the ability of this contiguous piece of property that wraps around that corner to serve the intent of the master plan and the revision, right or wrong? And there's, that's why we have revisions, that's why we have master plan exercises. Is that, is the, our impairment of the NB zone, is that something that's be considered as a board here that we should be concerned about as opposed to looking at this individual lot? And, and Mr. Weber, you can weigh in, Mr. Phillips as well, but I'm going to start with these guys first.
Certainly. I think what your question starts to ask is, is this a rezoning for this area?
It feels a little, a little bit like it. It's not 90% of the zone, but-
And that's, that's my take. I don't believe it is a specific rezoning, because what they're asking to do is to still allow residential, which is permitted here, but just not the commercial. Does that break the zone plan from the standpoint of continuity of the zone plan? It does have some effect on that. And I think that's what the board has to weigh from the standpoint of, is that substantial in the standpoint of what the zone plan envisions? Although, one thing I would recommend you do is look at the zone plan and its boundaries and its limits, and see how this relates to the big picture. Because I think what the applicant's provided is that this is a unique location, and it's specific to that location, specific to its exposures, its access, its frontage, its relationship to single-family residential zones, and its relationship to other developments in and around the area. So it's, I could see your point, there's a concern there, and I felt that same concern. And I even thought, why even, why can't we have some level of service commercial in the building? Because there may even be a need for that in this building. So, it's, it's something you need to weigh as far as the substantial.
So maybe, Mr. Phillips, then to flip it back to you, the compelling counterargument that I've heard from you is this is a gateway property, something that is particularly well-suited for this, this application. Do you want to take it from there, just to reestablish that point?
I mean, I, I generally concur with what Ed just, you know, represented and expressed to you. I don't see this as basically damaging the integrity of your NB zoning generally, again, because of its uniqueness relative to the rest of the district, and that's what D1 variances are about.
Right. Right.
They're about why a particular property in a zone is well-fitted for something other than what the zone prescribes. I'd like to think I've advocated that case, you know, in a sufficient fashion for this particular board. I think, and that's what use variances and D1 variances are, as I see it. I think a rezoning would be problematic, because, you know, you, you're basically coming in to do a residential zoning and, you know, on this assemblage, and then is that spot zoning? You know, this, this is why there, you know, this board here is D1 use variance.
And I just, I draw attention to that as well, is when you look within the DRO, and I want to return to the D4, but just on the D1 point, when you look at the DRO, under NB permitted uses, there's a reference to, again, principal uses. Principal permitted use is found in the R5 residential zone, subject to the standards of that zone. If you look at the R5 zone, that's single-family and two-family dwellings. So, it suggests further to me that the residential character of the NB zone is meant to be small, either single-family or two-family, in keeping with perhaps what Plain Street, for example, has in place right now. So, I just draw that...
But again, and I tried to make this point, and maybe I didn't do it sufficient enough, but, and again, I'm being candid, I look at those five properties, which were, you know, once-old dwellings, and look at how that intersection and everything around it has developed, and I just don't think it's in the best interest to continue those residential in the future, given the intensity of the traffic at that location. To me, that makes no sense.
True.
And, and the NB zoning, which, beyond the R5, which it allows, calling for smaller convenience retail on small lots with residential may or may not be above.
Right.
To me, that's, that's a waste of an opportunity to do something special at this gateway site. That's the way I see the site, and I think there are legitimate reasons for the D1 use variance.
I think you've given Mr. Snake his firm a place to start in the next master plan revision, so, thank you.
I've got a follow-up question for Mr. Snake, as I actually just, you mentioned, when you responded to Mr. Spur's question, about the uniqueness of the property. Do you attribute the uniqueness to the property's location, or the fact that it's unique in that it's an assemblage of several lots? That's sort of leading to the, the hand.
I believe the location is one of the predominant things to consider. The assemblage of properties is something that I don't want to give too much weight to myself, because there could be smaller assemblages of development here that may also achieve the same objectives that they have identified. Could it be two parcels? Could it be two developments, which is two driveways? That could be a possibility, although probably highly unlikely, because of the nature of the market and where things are these days. I do feel it's more of the location.
So, let me follow up on what Mr. Snake is saying. I agree, it's a gateway location, it'd be nice to have something more attractive there than those houses. Would, and again, you know, maybe I'm going too far by asking this question, but would it be fair, or would it be, be better from my point of view, to have a smaller project with some concession to the neighborhood business on the first floor? That, I think, would be, to me, a more acceptable situation for this very busy intersection. Still have a very attractive project there, just not so massive and some concession to the neighborhood business character.
What I've asked Ms. Alfonso to put up on the screen is to show the existing five blocks. Now, the ordinance in the NB zone shows that you should have the building in front, and then you put the parking lot behind, because they do not want the off-street parking between the front facade of the building and the street right away. So, this was done really as an idea as to what could be done, recognizing that you'd have the driveways all in place, you'd have that inability to maneuver, you'd have that inability to make left-hand turns, you then have all those traffic complications that this particular proposal avoids. So, we went through that with the traffic, that based on the driveway that's proposed, you can make a left turn, that when you exit and turn to the right, you can make a left or a right at River Road. When you're having these driveways that go into that stacked parking that occurs at Morris and River Road, you're just creating something that for a business owner, to put a commercial business there in that size building, because the buildings are the right size, and have the parking behind them, what are you going to generate? You're going to have the ability to have a driveway, you're going to have a building, you have to have the driveway going into the back, and you're going to have people that drive that road very quickly. That tends to have a very fast spot. I tend to do, and of course, I'm not a witness, but I walked this several times in order to familiarize myself. It's not particularly pedestrian-friendly. That's not something where people are going to go, "Oh, I'm going to stop and get a Starbucks here. I'm not going to pick up a pizzeria, a pizza." No, you're going to go, "That's too problematic to operate a motor vehicle in that spot." So, to make a turning maneuver, to make a turning maneuver out, it's not going to work. And that, I think, is an important aspect with regard to the view and to the steps that were taken by the applicant as to what fits here, what makes sense. These do not make sense. This proposal is what, from a common sense standpoint, works.
Mr. Weber, if you can give some context to this. Is this an exhibit that someone prepared?
I would ask that, Josh, where would it be recalled?
Thank you. I just wanted to give it some, some basis by which you just provided it, sorry.
Sure, no problem. So, this exhibit was really just an exercise that we put together, looking at each, the lot size for each property, right? We took the lot size for each property. As Mr. Phillips noted, the max building coverage for each lot is thirty percent. So, we're basically showing, in the dark hatch at the rear of the property, a building that would be thirty percent, complying with that requirement. Note that we could technically add a second floor and still comply with the FAR requirement, so just visualizing that, you can see, you know, majority of the rear of the back, rear of the site, we have a building, and you have a second story as well. The lighter hatch...
But you agree with me that the building's supposed to be in the front, the parking, so you have to have the building, a driveway going alongside, the narrow, the building now being narrowed, and then the parking lot behind it.
Correct, yes. So, the configuration would change slightly, as Mr., as Mr. Weber noted. And again, this was really just for visual representation. And then the, the lighter hatch, which is the parking areas and driveways, that's sixty percent of impervious coverage, so taking the sixty percent of the impervious coverage with thirty percent of the building coverage, that's ninety percent max lot coverage, which would require, which would comply with the NB zone. And again, this is really just a representation to see...
Starting from right to left on the buildings, what's the footprint of the building? Do you have that data? I can't quite read it off the exhibit on the screen.
I need to get my eyes checked, can't see.
Is that as high, is that as close as you can get?
It says two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two square feet is the footprint, or thirty percent, and the FAR is five thousand seven forty-four, or sixty percent.
So, yeah, how much on that one, Sam?
A two-story building, footprint is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two square feet, or thirty percent, and the FAR is five thousand seven forty-four square feet, or sixty percent.
So, for a commercial, well, I'll pose this to Mr. Phillips when he testifies, but we'll ask what sort of commercial use you would do, you would expect on a twenty-eight hundred square foot footprint. Next.
The tax lot six has a footprint showing of two thousand seven zero four square feet, or thirty percent, and a floor area ratio of five thousand four hundred and eight square feet.
The next two buildings are very similar in size as well.
And they're about twenty-five or twenty-six hundred square feet, and fifty-one hundred or fifty-two hundred square feet in floor area.
And the last lot, all the way on the left, is obviously, everyone can see, is slightly larger than the other lots.
Yeah. It is four thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet of building and floor area of eight thousand six hundred and forty-two square feet.
And that lot is the closest one to the intersection of River and Morris?
Yes.
So, I'll just point out, there are more options than having five separate lots and having one large complex. Those aren't the only two options.
Well, once you have the, if you're looking at the existing lots, that's the result that you get when you look at the development, the existing lots, and that's the design, other than flipping around the, the front building and putting the parking in the back, that's designed to be compliant. This is what the, the ordinance calls for, and it's not something that makes any sense to, as you heard from the traffic engineer, the one location of the driveway is what allows left turns into Morris Avenue, allows to join the traffic pattern that gets you down to River Road to make a right or a left. That's where your driveway has to go. So, at that point, you're putting an assemblage together. If you're putting an assemblage together, you're putting an assemblage together that makes the most sense, that's the quietest for the neighbors, and that quietest is residential.
Okay, let's, Mr. Weber, you can take a seat. Mr. Phillips, let's keep going. Let's return back to the D4 discussion. So, I don't mean to oversimplify the criteria with which the board is meant to weigh this, but perhaps what Mr. Yuko was trying to point to is a compelling positive criteria, something that screams out and says, "This additional density is appropriate because it's scratching so much the community has." I'm thinking about affordable housing, for example, which meets the criteria for sure. I mean, is there, is there some other element to this project that you would want to draw our attention to in terms of positive criteria that you believe justifies the overage in FAR?
I, to be perfectly honest with you, I think I've addressed what I think are the reasons that support the FAR. We are indeed providing an affordable housing set aside, as, you know, per your ordinance, but again, I just don't think you can look at the issue, the FAR, in a, in a vacuum. I think you got to consider the context, I think you got to consider the fact that it's all residential, which is a lesser traffic generator. I think you have to consider the design of the building, which they, I think, is architecturally and aesthetically pleasing. You have to consider the fact that the applicant has placed the building at a significant distance from the rear property line, has buried the parking, has done things to afford protections to the neighboring properties, and you have to consider, again, at this location, what's recently been built in terms of the mass of buildings, and again, I'll point to the Sunrise as being a reasonable comp, and it's at the FAR that we're proposing here.
I'm sure a reasonable comp is, it's a different zone, the residents aren't coming and going all day by the nature of the people who live there, so I don't think that's, that's a reasonable comparison.
But the, from a traffic standpoint, what we're proposing is clearly, has been demonstrated, clearly has a lesser impact than any combination of the as-zone development, whether it's all commercial or commercial on the ground floor, residential above, under any of the scenarios, one or multiple, so...
Wouldn't a compliant development with the FAR have a lesser impact than what's being proposed?
Not from a traffic standpoint, from a massive standpoint...
Fewer units wouldn't have a lesser traffic impact?
No. I think that was demonstrated in the tables that were basically put up. I mean, we can put it up again, but the way I...
I'm talking fewer residential units.
Okay, yeah, I think that's what Mr. Phillips, there was a disconnect.
Okay, yeah.
Obviously, if we reduced the number of residential units, the trip generation would go down.
Right, I think that's where Mr. Yuko may have been going.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize.
And just trying to make the point that the Sunrise residents, because of who they are, aren't driving in and out all day.
They do have a lot of staffing and nursing homes, and then the guests. I spend a lot of time at nursing homes for guardianships.
Now, Mr. Phillips, have you had the opportunity to look at other residential developments? And I'm thinking of the one that this board reviewed on Summit Avenue to Forest, Beacon?
Yes.
And how does this compare to that, in terms of the number of units and the, the amount of units per area?
So, Beacon is denser on a, on a per acre, units per acre basis, and I believe that it also has a higher FAR for not to say...
Doesn't Beacon have restrictions on turning movements, and it's signalized at the location?
It is signalized at that location. We're at the point here that our traffic and the way that this is set up will be able to accommodate the turning maneuvers without a traffic signal.
Right, and Beacon is also much closer to the train station, correct?
It is. And it's at a higher density and a higher FAR.
Can I ask a question? Paul, do you think that this project provides a unique, different housing option, somewhat different than most of the housing options available in Summit?
So, I mean, you heard from the applicant and the, and the architect, you know, not that other projects aren't upscale or luxury rental, which is the intent here, but I think in terms of the design and the amenity package and the valet service on the parking, it probably is providing a bit of a higher product than what, you know, the city may be used to in terms of prior developments.
And that could potentially be seen as a positive?
It can be viewed as a positive, yes.
Any question, further questions from members of the board? Okay, and then just to orient everyone within this process, I believe this is your last witness, is that correct?
It is my last witness, Mr. Chairman.
So, we'll offer then the public the opportunity to ask questions of the planner, so just questions, and then we're going to offer the public the opportunity to offer comments, respectful comments, positive or negative, and then Mr. Weber and Ms. Alfonso will offer a summation, and then the board will deliberate. So, hearing no further questions from the board, I'll offer Karthik or Don, if you have any questions you'd like to ask of Mr. Phillips.
I just have one. Don Nelson, twenty Plain Street. So, I understand, do I understand, right now, there's currently five lots?
Correct.
So, that, so really, the first question, I guess, is, do we put them together? Is that kind of the first question? If that doesn't work, then this whole project falls apart. So, not that that should happen, I'm just quite hearing, you know, is that how the process goes?
So, there are five lots. This applicant is proposing as part of this project to merge those lots into a 1.15 acre assemblage and develop it accordingly. If the board approves, that's ultimately what will, you know, be the physical manifestation. If not, then it'll continue to be five lots.
I wasn't sure if the lots were already merged or not.
Karthik, last witness, come on, this is it?
Yeah.
All right, then, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you. So, now's the opportunity for members of the interested public to offer comments, again, positive, negative, respectful always, with respect to the application. There's no three-minute time, time limit on you here, but we'd invite either of you, if you'd like to come forward, and anyone else hiding in the background, to come and offer your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. We need to get, we're going to swear you in, actually, for this.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Karthik Jayaram, last name is J-A-Y-A-R-A-M, address is eleven Plain Street.
Thank you.
So, first of all, I do want to thank everybody who's been involved with this, this project, including the applicants and all their experts. I know this has been long, and sometimes they've been feeling a lot of maybe stupid questions from people like me who don't understand the full process. So, definitely thank you for, for that. When I initially looked at this project, this was in, way back in March, when we had the neighborhood meeting, the first thing that I kind of really looked at it when I saw the picture was, the first thought that came to my mind was, wow, that is a big building. And when I kind of like learned more about the building itself during the, during the neighborhood meeting and in the subsequent, you know, the zoning board presentations, what kind of looked at from a size standpoint also transformed for me from a concern from the density as far as the number of units that were being planned. I'm not going to belabor or repeat some of the variances that have been sought, but the key things to note is there is almost a lot of variances around, that is in the double digits in terms of percentages, around what is being allowed, particularly around the building area coverage and the floor area ratio as well. When I kind of reviewed the application itself as to understand, okay, why this should be, this should be approved or with the zoning board, there was comments that were made in the application around, obviously, this location being in a very unique spot, and one of the reasons it was mentioned was also the proximity to public transportation. Now, for reference, the only public transportation that is close to this site is a, the number seventy bus that goes between Newark and Livingston, and it... Newark and Livingston, and it runs about like four trips between six and eight, typically considered the rush hours for this area. Now, I do want to understand, because when I moved here back in 2015, I was one of the people who took that bus in because I was trying to get in time to the Summit train station to catch the 7:13 to New York, and it often ended that being I would pretty much miss that 7:13 because that bus service was pretty unreliable. And the reason why I mention that is, the justification, so to speak, for asking for this site was this close proximity to public transportation, but I often questioned if that public transportation could actually be relied, because in my case, I ended up buying a second car because it was much more convenient to commute into the town and catch a train, or to even go to other places within the town. The application also said that it creates a buffer between the busy intersection of Morris and the residence. However, in that process, I also feel that they have done a little bit of damage to the area by removing the existing buffers between the proposed building and the residence. And specifically, what I'm talking about is the removal of about 25-plus trees that is there on these lots. There are some trees that are kind of right behind my yard, where the trees are very much taller, about 30 feet, 40 feet tall, if I could estimate them. They have been proposed to replace them with trees that are about eight foot tall, or which I assume will be about six feet above ground, or which is about the height of a normal privacy fence. And this has a lot of concern for me as from a privacy standpoint, because now you have a big building that is in your backyard, and there's not enough adequate privacy between those lots and kind of like my property. I was also gonna mention about the number of units that have been proposed in here, because I think, because of the number of units, there has also been requirements around the number of parking spaces, and I think the applicant has done that by the three-tiered stacking parking system. I did have concerns about the fire department's comments around the safety, but I think that has been addressed through a report recently submitted, so I'm not gonna talk about that much. I'm assuming that due diligence will be done by the board. Lastly, continuing on the issue of privacy also is the variance regarding the pitch of the roof. Allowing for a flat roof allows this property to have a dog park, which I don't understand why would be in one of the most busiest corners of the city between Summit and River Road. In my experience, when I had dogs, loud sounds and noise would make the dogs spooked, I guess, and so they tend to like bark a lot. Plus, there's also provisions on the roof to have cooking grills, seating, and I think that during one of the testimonies, they also mentioned the possibility of adding televisions on the rooftop sometime in the future. All of these do have considerations from a quality of life and, more importantly, privacy for those that are there right behind this lot. The option to add affordable housing is great, however, I don't think that having this massive building is the way to get more. I think we can still offer affordable housing with having smaller multifamily units in these areas. So combined with what I had mentioned earlier about the size of the building and some of the concerns around the privacy of this particular site, I do request that this application be rejected. In my opinion, it does not fit within the character of the existing neighborhood, both from an aesthetic standpoint as well as the general character of what this residential neighborhood is. I really do think redevelopment can be done in a better way, in a more thoughtful way, something that can align with what the DRO sets forward, especially in these cases where there are multiple lots being merged into one. So I will request again that you reject this application because of some of the concerns that I have mentioned with respect to the neighborhood residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The pressure is pretty well-prepared, Don. I'm not, all right, I can follow.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street.
If you could raise your right hand.
I'm sorry.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last name.
Donald Nelson, N E L S O N, 20 Plain Street. Really, the only reason I'm here is quality of life in our neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years. I've been in Summit for my whole life. And when I built my house down there, it was a nice neighborhood, grass field across the street, four acres of grass. Tried to convince the city to keep that acreage for playing fields, whatever. Went away, now we ended up with a promenade. And it's funny, because I came to the meetings for the promenade, and same story, same stuff. And it's funny, because with the Broad Street West project that's going on, the professionals for the Toll Brothers actually said the promenade doesn't fit in Summit. So the left hand doesn't tell what the right hand's doing. I think the Flanagan's are doing a great job. The building looks beautiful, I'm not really against it, I'm not really for it. It's really about quality of life in the neighborhood. We constantly compete with people parking on the street who work for local dealerships. If my phone was, had a battery, I'd show you pictures. Today, somebody was on loading Volvos or loading Volvos on Morris Avenue in front of Marco Polo's parking lot. That's what's gonna happen when this part of town gets developed. It's a, the building looks beautiful, I think it's a, you know, I kinda like it in one aspect, I kinda don't like it in the other. It's really quality of life, and that's what you're charged with. Protecting our quality of life, whether it's the zoning board, the planning board, or the city council, your job is to protect the neighborhood's quality of life. And if you walk the neighborhood on a typical day, I can sit in my driveway, and this has nothing to do with the applicants, but it really does. I can sit in my driveway and look down Plain Street at River Road, and it's nothing but cars. That's the traffic light that we didn't study because it doesn't affect this property. No, but it affects the neighborhood that this property butts to, whether it's Webster, or Plain Street, or Mealy, it affects us. It's the quality of life. I know Plain Street is a buffer zone or interface between the neighborhood business and residential. We took that risk when we bought there, or built there, but we want to try and preserve it the best we can, and that's what you guys have to do and young ladies have to do. So I'm not really against the project, maybe making it smaller, so we don't have all this floor area ratio variances and all that stuff. I had to go for a variance from my house for eight square feet. We're talking 112 percent. Is it a plus or minus? I don't know. Does it benefit me? I don't know. That's your job. But really, what I want you to consider is the quality of life for the neighbors around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sir Nelson. I don't believe there's any other members of the interested public here this evening. Those, thank you both for commenting. We do appreciate public input. Mr. Weber, we'll offer you the close.
I've been listening to what the board has decided, been listening to Mr. Yuko's comments, Mr. Mollins' comments, and I know that this board is well-educated, sophisticated, and aware of its powers and its jurisdictional requirements. But in all of those discussions, if I can, Mr. Chairman, perhaps we can hear from other board members who have not been so forthcoming as Mr. Yuko and Mr. Mollins as to what they think of the project. We've heard from the neighbors, we have the good points from Mr. Jayaram, we have the good points from Mr. Nelson, and they're right. It is the board's decision as to what's best for the neighborhoods and for the city of Summit. So it's both of those aspects. And as a result, when you look at those, both of those aspects, this redevelopment, small R, this reinvestment, it's good for the city. In terms of its effect on plain, we believe that having it as a residential solely is good for the neighbors. But those are my thoughts. The board has heard me say this over and over again, but perhaps if you feel comfortable, Mr. Chairman, we have an opportunity to hear from the other board members.
We have deliberations coming next. I think what we want to do is we want to perhaps spend a little bit of time addressing the conditions that we've discussed throughout the application, which is often how we address negative criteria or enhance some of the positive criteria. So maybe, Andy, can you run us through the conditions that you've captured, and we can together refine those before the board begins its deliberations?
Absolutely. So I have a number of conditions, a couple of which were left open-ended in prior meetings, so we'll need to confirm those. First is our usual compliance with those conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. Second, I had a note that there would be a condition on hours of lighting for the roof with the possibility that it's going to be restricted during 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Is that accurate and acceptable?
Correct.
Okay. Third- Oh, and that was the other point. We did follow up Mr. Lloydkiss. The lighting on the site itself will not be on all night, only that which is required for safety.
Thank you.
Third is that valet parking shall be maintained for the site to ensure ADA compliance with a minimum of two valets on-site during peak hours and a minimum of one overnight. Fourth is that the applicant shall conform with the COA regulations, including tenant parking spaces, to be prorated. Fifth, I had a note and a question mark on whether there was going to be some restriction on the size of dogs that were allowed. I know that was discussed, but I don't think anything was finalized. I think that the final operational guidance was three dogs. At once it was established that it would be by schedule, so that the tenants would be only able to use it upon a scheduled time. In terms of the size of the dogs, I don't believe that there was a requirement one way or the other, no. But it's up to the board. That is the board's jurisdiction to determine what they consider an appropriate condition. Thoughts from any board members on whether there's any pressing need for a restriction on size?
Just to, sorry, just to clarify, there's three dogs at any one time in the space.
Correct.
So it's not three dogs per unit or anything like that?
Correct. It's three times, three dogs in the, we're on to the dog yard again.
I know, I know. In the rearview mirror, it's pulled forward again. Does anyone, Mr. Weber, a little bit of what he's asking for? Anyone have any comments on this or particular position, Mr. Mollin, or you have an opinion on dog usage?
If someone wants to keep a Great Dane in their apartment, that's on them.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So perhaps the condition then is limiting the number of dogs that are using the facility at a given time, and maybe, Ms. Weber, if you could just confirm through your applicants, is three an appropriate number? I don't, I've never run a dog run before.
Yes, three is the appropriate time, appropriate number of dogs at any one given time.
Got it. All right, that is the fifth condition. The sixth is that the scheduling of any event must be scheduled by a resident and notified to the manager so arrangements can be made. Events would only be permitted if onsite parking is sufficient to allow them.
I think that there was also a population trigger. Ten guests, I thought, was the number that I seem to recall, or maybe I thought of it. So when you have an event, right, so someone's asking somebody, stand and marriage is an event. I believe that was thrown out there. You, I don't know that that was specifically discussed as a limit on the condition. Would we like to see that?
Mr. Weber, your client-
I'm suggesting ten guests.
Is a reasonable threshold?
Would be something that they would have to notify ahead of time, so that the appropriate steps can be taken to assure that the parking is attended to.
Okay.
All right. The seventh is that the applicants shall engage, and I believe the firm's name is Jensen Hughes Incorporated, to design a sprinkler system which shall be subject to review and approval of the fire chief.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, just thought to clarify, are they, they're consulting on the entire fire protection plan or just the garage? I don't mean to unnecessarily restrict you guys in terms of the consultants you use, but-
It's the whole building.
It's the whole building, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the eighth and final condition I had noted is that the applicants will install the basement systems with manufacturer specifications substantially similar to those provided in the engineering study, which shall comply with state noise requirements. That's all I had noted.
Mr. Weber, anything we may have missed through this extensive testimony?
We, starting with the roof, the, no sound amplification. There was no television proposed, but it doesn't mean that they wouldn't have one in the future, but no sound amplification associated with that. That there would be 24/7 staff onsite. We went through the operational guidelines that were represented and presented by Mr. Flanagan. I would submit that those operational guidelines be included as a condition. I don't recall exactly what they were, but that is important for the management of this, and that's why we went through those operational guidelines.
Just again, to be fair to your clients, are we asking for them to submit the complete operational guidelines for review and approval by someone?
We have that.
That could seem like a bit of an inconvenience to me.
I have that in writing, so we can submit that.
Do you have draft operational guidelines?
That was a memo that was previously filed with the board, actually, and we presented it at the last hearing.
So the condition is to submit that, or to submit it and condition, condition it upon approval and approval? So we want to get the full scope.
Jim is saying that you could include that entire sheet, that entire memo, as a condition that they follow those guidelines.
And it's called Turf Tunnel Park Memorandum, Operational Guidelines for the heat hearing May 16, 2022. It was dated May 13, 2022, revised May 16, 2022.
How would that work in the future? Let's say you wanted to change your operational guidelines, assuming we approve this three, four years from now, would you have to come back for a variance to do that?
If we just kept it in the lease, they would have control over that, but you would lose the ability to manage that. So that, yes, they would have to come back and have that condition rescinded.
I mean, that seems highly impractical.
Yeah, but not for any guideline for the operations, right? Just the ones that are included in that sheet. Jim, for the dog run, it's just about certain specific items that the board wanted us to deal with.
Okay.
So maybe we should go through that memo, Jim.
All right. So the rooftop amenities are available only for the residents. Rooftop activity ceases no later than 10:00, subject to staff management discretion if necessary to restrict the time earlier. Access to the roof not earlier than 7:00 a.m. All lighting downlit, no daylight or more than 3,000 K. Seating areas will be boarded by planters. Well, that was all part of the plans, and you can see that on the architecturals. Lighting along the parapet wall, downlit, 26 inches height. Downlit wall sconces on the dog run, all at 3,000 Kelvin. On the cooking grills, the grills will be locked and available only upon reservation and certification of training for the residents. During usage, grills will be monitored. After cooking, grills will be turned off, gas supply locked. Illumination by wall sconces at 96 inches bounding height. Dog run, scheduled appointment, subject, of course, to emergencies. It said five, three's the appropriate response. Residents will be required to attend to their dogs, forfeit use of the dog run, and a waste receptacle is provided, will be addressed daily by the, by the maintenance.
And what was the date on those guidelines again?
They were dated May 13, 2022, revised May 16, 2022.
And what we're saying is that these specific ones will not be amended without prior board approval.
Well, that's implicit in the fact that it's a condition of the approval, that the condition is impractical.
I think these days I want to say everything, okay?
Fair enough.
Can I, can we go back just to the limit on guests? Because I think, I mean, if the, if the idea is that we want to limit the number of cars, maybe we should say that specifically, because I could see like a manager who is managing this may say, you know, if you're having a five-year-old's birthday party, and you're inviting, you know, either 10 five-year-olds, or, you know, moms and their five-year-olds, you know, you're counting every mother and their five-year-old, that's five five-year-olds and their mothers, and you can't-
But the 10, the 10-person is a threshold with which the management would provide extra scrutiny to assess the availability of parking during that timeframe. It's not a cap, right? It's a trigger.
Right.
It's a threshold, it's not a cap.
It's a trigger. So in other words, if you're deciding to have that birthday party, and you're having 10 guests, you have to notify staff ahead of time, 24-hour notice.
Okay, and they're not gonna say, well, you, you're capped at 10 guests-
No, no.
-in your own apart- Okay, and they're not going to say, well, you're capped at 10 guests in your own apartment?
No.
And you have a family, and they're just coming in one, two cars. They're not going to say you can't?
No. They just have to give the staff notice so that arrangements can be made.
We wouldn't be able to have Sunday dinner.
Really?
Okay. I think that exhausts then the conditions. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, just from my notes, I wanted to offer. Typically, you have more of a statement about emergency generators being operational during certain period or tested during certain periods of time.
We no longer need that because the DRO was amended to specifically incorporate testing times.
And they're usually in Mr. Dower's memo.
Gotcha. And then garbage is a private hauler, as I remember from testimony. Is there anything we wanted to put into our resolution?
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. No further.
Thank you. And then I assume we've included the standard stipulation, inclusion of the engineer's memo for...
That was first.
That was first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, one further thought, Mr. Chairman.
I'll let you have one further thought, Mr. Weber.
Always have a first thought. See, at one point, the city of Summit and its planning board engaged in litigation over 47 Maple Street. The city sued its own planning board. The reason that they did that, the city said, oh, you're depriving us of jurisdiction over this site by granting this approval. The planning board said, no, we're exercising our jurisdiction in order to do that. They went to court, and the court agreed with the planning board that, yeah, they had done the right thing. This was not an excess exercise of authority. That ended up a rezoning. In this instance, I would suggest that this is similar to what happened in 47 Maple. That this isn't so large of a development, where you're taking the entire N B zone, all of it, from the diner all the way up to the antique dealer, and saying, we're going to do it this way. You're not adding so much acreage that the courts have established previously, saying, yeah, now you're into a rezoning. Now you've really gone beyond the pale. So in that instance, I would ask the board to keep that in mind. This is something where, in terms of the creation of the application before the board, removing the commercial use, that's on that first floor. And once that use is gone, once we take away the thing that creates the activity, the noise, the debris, the paper, the lights, the... All of... Everyone knows what goes on when you have that activity. Once you take that away and you create a residential development, that we were at the Summit Community Center on that first hearing, because of the interest that all the neighbors had, that the city had, that neighbors had, that attorneys were brought in to oppose that application, we had to go to that community center to be heard, that we could manage All the work that Flanickens have put in has been directed toward addressing the neighbors. And the whole point has been, from the beginning, I said, this is good for the city. This is the culmination of the entrance. Everyone says, oh, I have a gateway project. I have a gateway... The gateway projects are in the center of Summit. This is truly a gateway project. This is truly where Essex County, Morris County, and Union County come together, and this is that entrance in that direction into the city. I talked before, Morris Avenue goes all the way down to Elizabeth. It's the major arterial over the county. This is good for the city. This is something that, within the N B zone, where they want that residential, but they want commercial. It doesn't make sense in this property, but it had to be done in a way that was sensitive to the neighbors. And this is that type of development, and because it's residential, that's that quietude that you would want to manage this site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
All right. Let's proceed then into our deliberations. I don't... Does anyone need to review the conditions? We just went through them. No? Good. Okay. Fair enough. Saving time. Who would like to begin the deliberations?
Well, I'll start. I mean, I've already made clear, I think, how I feel. I think it's an attractive project. I like the building. I just think it's... I'm not persuaded by the argument for the D1 use variance. For that reason, it would not advance the goals of the master plan, as it directly contradicts the goals of the master plan for this zone. I think the applicant would better serve the public good with neighborhood businesses that serve the public, the residents, and all the employees that work in the neighborhood too. They would benefit from access to more local businesses. I'm also concerned about the... And oppose... Would oppose the D4 variance. This is new construction. The applicant has the opportunity to decide how big a building they want to build, and they're coming in and asking for F A R. That's, you know, 50% over the 75% limit, 37 percentage points, but 50% more than allowed by the code. And I just think it's too much for the site. It's a very busy location, a very busy corner. You know, I think I could favor something that was smaller, with some concession to the neighborhood business on the first floor, but the way it is, I just don't think it's justifiable, and it doesn't serve the goals of the master plan. So I would oppose this.
So I'm probably less opposed to this application. I actually think it's a very attractive project, and I think aesthetically, it would benefit the city in terms of just providing, you know, a nice visual element as well as high-quality housing. Where I get tripped up is not on the D1 variance. I'm okay with that. I think at that end of Morris Avenue. I would agree with the applicant's points around retail at that particular location. I don't think it's conducive to, certainly, pedestrian-oriented retail, and where I kind of get tripped up is on the D4 variance and all of the implications of traffic flow at that location. In general, I think if you look at all the multifamily around Summit, it all exceeds the F A R, and probably at these proportions or higher, to the point raised about the beacon. I find this location especially problematic, and that's why I was pressing on the traffic study. Everyone on this board has driven that location numerous times. I've had three kids go through Washington School, and at those peak hours, that location is problematic. I appreciate traffic engineers following I T methodology, and I have no reason to doubt him following that to the letter. Problem is, when you look at that methodology and the trips generated, and then we look at our own experience and our experience in this town, they don't add up. And then you look at all the cars contemplated at that location, its distance from public transportation, and I see what already is a somewhat problematic location becoming an especially problematic location at those peak hours. So I could support something here, but it would have to be smaller. So, I mean, if the applicant could make it there, I could get there, but right now, at 52 units, I think the negatives from that intensity of use, specifically the excess traffic generated by the site, outweigh any potential benefits to the city.
David, just to clarify briefly, because I know you started off indicating that you were not as opposed to the D1 variance, but the reasons you've basically expressed here are that it's not particularly suited for that location, this particular application. Can you just clarify that?
In terms of the intensity of use, not necessarily the removal of the retail usage here? So, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
What else from this side? Scott?
Sure. In New York City, there's a process to deal with cases like this, especially assemblages when you're going for greater F A R, bulk, change in use. It's called the U-LAR process, and it basically amounts to spot zoning. They don't like to call it that, but that's exactly what it is. Typically, our cases, we were asked to weigh in on 3%, 4% variations in F A R, you know, 18 inches on the setback. So obviously, this is a whole other can of worms. Having said that, though, the reason why in New York City they don't call it spot zoning is because they asked the applicants to provide contextual justification for the increase in bulk, the increase in mass, or change in use, whatever they're going for. So in this case, I think that is also applicable, right? I believe contextually speaking, if you're not looking at a void and you're not looking at sort of the N B on a, you know, a piece of paper and all the regulations that follow it, I think then this project is much more realistic, because I think it absolutely fits contextually within the scale, the scope, the bulk of that surrounding area within the site. And then the other thing that I think is critically important is to fully understand the argument they're making for the removal of retail at the base. Having probably designed 15 million square feet of retail, I can tell you that this site would not support it in a mixed-use scenario. The depth of the site, the relationship to that Bermuda Triangle of traffic, and then the slope of the site down, I don't... Couldn't get retail that works. You couldn't park it correctly, and then you wouldn't be able to lease it to anyone because no one would want it, right? It just wouldn't be visible from any point of entry. And then if you add in the extra curb cuts you're going to need for the in-and-outs, it literally makes zero sense. So I totally accept and understand the argument to go with residential top to bottom on this project. The size, I get it. It sounds like there's a lot of pushback on the size from the traffic standpoint, from the scale relative to adjacent neighborhoods, but I just feel like if you're going to go through the trouble of developing this site, I mean, we're talking, what, an $18 to $20 million investment, you have to consider the return on that investment. And, you know, one or two stories is going to make this project go away, and we're going to be left with what we have right now, which is not as good as getting this project built. This project will improve the site as opposed to what is existing now, or some one-story restaurant or two-story office building. They've clearly lucked out because of the circumstances of the site. I think any other site, we wouldn't even be considering what they're asking for, but I think the confluence of the site pressures really leaves just what they're doing as probably the only solution possible. And I think to build anything less is probably... I don't want to speak for the developers. Not going to make sense for them. I don't know why they would do the project at that point. So having said all that, I think contextually, this project works. I'm going to take the traffic expert's word that it's not going to have the impact that we're worried about, and I would be in favor of this project.
Dr. Levine, I don't believe you're voting on this, but we welcome your thoughts.
Thank you. I will still happily share my opinion here. Affordable housing in a luxury building in Summit is very appealing to me. The initial location of them all kind of together on the first floor, I did... I noted that, and it was troubling, and then I was pleased to hear that they would then be sort of smattered throughout the rest of the building. I do agree that the overall scale of the project is sensitive to the neighborhood. Do I necessarily agree with the scale of the neighborhood that it's in? Not entirely, but that's not what I'm asked tonight to deliberate on. I do agree that the site is the perfect... I actually think this is a very good location for redevelopment, because when I look at those five houses, they look lonely to me there. They're not part of the neighborhood that goes from Plain Street and all those lovely streets, like encased by Butler Parkway there. They're not part of that. They're sort of on their own, and it looks to me as if it might feel uncomfortable to live in those homes. And I get why you would want to combine the lots and create something that could be better. So I see that, and that was driven only because of what has already happened and gone on around it. I agree that the building itself, architecturally, is quite nice-looking. I like the use of the stone. I think that... I think it's sort of a nod to the historic fiber of this town, and I really... I like that piece a lot specifically. The enhanced rear setback, I really like that in concept, and I like that there's that grassy area on the one side where the setback isn't as deep from the building. But then, when I looked at the site plan, the setback is really just the impervious, very busy, I guess, active driveway, and not really, you know, it's not really... It is not, you know, a big area there that's grass or nothing or empty space. So I do think, from Plain Street, their backyard, they're going to notice, like, a very busy kind of active driveway at one spot. So I don't know... So in my mind, that enhanced setback, while it sounds nice on paper, wasn't as compelling in reality to me. A positive that I see, or a choice you made, is to have that excess, that grand excess of available parking spots with the three-tier and the double-tier stackers, which now I guess we're all experts in, which is kind of cool. But I think that's wonderful, because that's going above and beyond to accommodate guests, not capping the size of gatherings, and really not adding any more pressure to the on-street parking that really is plaguing so much of our city. So I appreciate that you're going well above what is allotted and anticipated that the renters will have. Regarding the D1 variance, I do agree with my colleague directly to my right about the... About what it would be like to have more retail there. I took one of my daughters recently, there's, I think it's a nail salon right in there, and it is so busy, that parking lot at the promenade, it was ridiculously busy. And then coming out, making a left turn is hard at certain times of day, and I think the quick in-and-out stopping of retail, of a dry cleaner, of, you know, there's a hair salon next door too, or a men's grooming salon, and the type of traffic that that causes is much different than a residential building. So for all these reasons, I'm not voting this evening, but if I were, I, you know, after much thought and care, do think that I would vote yes to this application. Thank you.
Let's help Mr. Weber ease counting heads. We'll come back to you, Mr. Steiner. How about Liz? You care to weigh in?
Sure. So, I'm going to shave too. Thanks. So I think the building is absolutely beautiful, and I would agree, it's a much better building than what currently exists. I do have an issue, and I actually don't have an issue with the D1, with the retail. I agree. I think what we have currently there works. I don't think additional retail would be a good thing, just because I just... I'm not sure what you put there. But my concern is the scale. I think 52 units is very large. I'd be better with 40. I have an issue with the traffic study, because I do, because I live very close by, and I always think traffic studies are kind of crappy, because they're not really... Sorry, not for you, but in real life, it doesn't really, you know, it doesn't encompass real-life living and getting in and out on Morris Avenue, considering the four schools, the Volkswagen, the Smite, all these things, and B M S, that's going to be their main campus. That's going to be a lot of traffic in this one contained area. I'm actually torn, because on one side, I think it's just absolutely beautiful. It will enhance the neighborhood, but then on the other side, I am just concerned about the traffic and then the scale. So I don't know, still.
Put Mr. Weber on the edge of his seat.
I know. I'm sorry.
Diana? Diana?
So I agree that it is a very attractive building. I like the massing and the articulation and the treatment of all, of the different types of materials, et cetera. I, I don't have a problem with excluding retail or commercial uses on the first level. I think that it actually makes a lot of sense in this particular unique location. So I, I think that is a very easy decision to be made there. I like the enhanced setback. I like, I, I was initially very skeptical about the parking, but I do like the parking being underground. Still kind of don't really like, love the lift so much, but I, I have, I've gotten much more comfortable with that and the valet system. I think that, you know, that is probably going to work out just fine. I like that this development would clean up kind of all of those five driveways and clean up all of the access points along Morris Avenue. And I do agree that this development would probably be the only and the most ideal scheme for this unique location. I think that there are some reasons why you, Summit is a little bit unique in terms of traffic and the way, you know, our schools do not provide busing. Our, you know, every, every child gets driven to school. Every high schooler has a car seeming, seemingly, or gets picked up by their best friend, or, you know, something like that. And, and I'm not sure that some of these kind of unique factors are not perhaps picked up in the national statistics that, you know, the traffic, you know, people use. But having said that, I, I have a sense that there's probably enough, and, and this is a congested area, there's no doubt. I'm not sure any other development either would have less of an impact. I don't think anything would have less of an impact. Most other development schemes would have more of an impact traffic-wise, or nothing gets done. And so for these reasons, I would support it.
Wally, what do you think?
I'm just gonna, I agree with all of that. That's, it's the most logical thing to put in this piece of property, right? You have these five existing, existing lots that aren't being utilized. I, too, was nervous about the lifts, learning more about them. It just seems like you know the area. You're doing the best that you can to mitigate parking issues in town. It's creative, and it seems like you're willing to make everything work. Yeah, it's promoting the general welfare by putting these things together and giving you something positive in the end. It's, it's a strange place, right? It's like at the end of Morris Avenue, you can be going to the mall, get stuck in traffic, or be going to Washington and hitting traffic, but making a left-hand turn there is really difficult, and I think, yeah, it's a, it's a good way to solve, you know, what you have there. I also think it promotes a lot of the master plan. You really are addressing issues that we are concerned about. Residents, we need low-income housing. You know, putting commercial properties there is going to increase traffic tenfold. It's going to be, and no one's going to really want to lease it out. So I think it's a, it's creative, it's good. If I was voting, I'd be voting for it. And it's also a beautiful piece of property.
Vice Chairman Steiner.
Okay. First thing I want to do is to say thank you to the Flanigans and to their team. This was one of the best presentations we'll put together applications that I've seen here in quite a while. It had all the opportunities to become contentious, to become a problem, but every time they could, they gave us alternatives. They gave us ideas. They worked with us, and hopefully, we can come to a resolution here that will make some sense for the city of Summit, for the neighborhood, and for the developer. Everything that they have presented and everything that we've all talked about makes a whole lot of sense. It, I, I do agree that resident, you know, the, I can tell you, if we don't do this, I have a feeling what you might see there is an aggregation of those properties and an extension of the promenade. Just think of that strip shopping center. I can show you examples all over the place in communities not very far from here, maybe called New Providence, where properties like that have happened, and the extensions have been done, and the driveway has been extended through the properties owned by other people. And they did get permission in that particular case to put stuff residential on the second or third floor, but nobody's had the financing to do it. Here we have a developer that is coming with, I, I wish I had a way to make this developer keep it in perpetuity, because I have a feeling that they would make sure that everything that they've said will happen forever. But unfortunately, as life moves on, things get sold and things will change. So all we can do is hope that, that they instill in the community that they bring in there that this is something that they need to be helpful with and work with, and keep their neighbors close and near to them on Plain Street and all the other areas that are there. This application makes sense to me, and I'm going to support it.
I appreciate, I want to direct some gratitude back to the board. I'd say over my tenure here on the board, this is one of the more thoughtful rounds of deliberation I've ever seen. So thank you for coming, thank you for coming from where you are and taking the time to consider all the different points. I personally find myself somewhere closer where Mr. Mullen frankly is, and some of the other board members have, have commented on. The comment, the, the argument with regard to the D1 variance, the removal of the first-floor retail makes good sense to me in terms of the location of, of the lots. That being served by commercial entities, while conceptually desirable, is not practical. It's not. And certainly Summit has a need for more residential units, more affordable housing units. All that's true. We are not, though, a policymaking body, and unfortunately, I can't exact uniformly those goals across the community. I get hung up on the D4 variance, the FAR, looking for a compelling positive criteria that really speaks to me and says that the overage in FAR that they're, that the applicant is requesting is offset in some crude calculus by, you know, some positive attribute. We heard from their planner that the reconfiguration of the lots, the single, the single exit and entry point, the positive impact on traffic is a, is a, is a positive criteria to consider. It doesn't overwhelm me. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily sell me with respect to just how significant the overage is that, that the applicant is looking for with respect to FAR, the density of use. And, you know, that's the, that's the judgment to be made here on the board, as we look for a greater and greater variance, a greater and greater deviation from what the governing body, the planning board, and everyone that gets involved with the master plan development, the DRO development, we have to weigh, you know, whether or not that calculus can support these applications. So for that reason, and not to overindex on the D variances, the C variances kind of all baked into this, frankly, I, I cannot support this application in its current form. But would note that if the board were to reject it this evening, I'd be compelled to see it return, not with ground-floor retail, but bringing that FAR figure closer to the 75% and could see, not necessarily to 75%, but closer to it, and could see myself supporting the application.
I would ask if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to ask for an adjournment so that the applicant can take into account the deliberations that the board members have been so thorough and thoughtful on, and perhaps we can address that and then have that considered, and then come back to the board at that point.
That's your call. I know it is a possibility. You don't need to grant that, but it's within the board's prerogative. Do you ask for a recess or an adjournment to another meeting, perhaps? How much deliberation?
How about a recess would be great, but I don't think that, and being able to address the concerns of the various board members that Mr. Mullen had, the points he had raised, the points that Mr. Yucco had raised, and the point that you had raised, Mr. Spur, could be addressed in five minutes.
I mean, I, I think if the purpose is to reconsider what you are proposing, we'd want to see plans, obviously, so I, yeah.
I would hope that we do it to a date specific.
Yes.
We still have another one hanging out there that we really don't want to replicate.
I understand. I'm conferring with our council, and I believe this is in my discretion as the chair. We're not going to grant the adjournment. We're going to proceed to a vote. We've heard the application to its completeness. We've heard public opinion, the opinion of the respective professionals. Part of my judgment in offering that, that opinion is, I feel, I feel like what will be returned will require a substantial discussion and refinement. This is not minor revision at the, at the margins. So I want to allow you the time, the time and deliberations necessary to, to reflect on the full deliberation and testimony that's been offered across now three, three hearings and the, the vote of the board this evening.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I think that we would be able to respond to this in a forthright manner. It's not something that hasn't been considered. There is a business model that drives this, of course, and that business model is what is going to be one of the determining factors. But it is something that, in consideration, I think could be something that would be presented to the board that would not be so substantially different, and since I'm hearing, we're talking about the floor area ratio. And so in terms of managing FAR, that's something that we've been able to manage other ways. So for the board to vote, and I'm counting four, three, so that's a denial, then that means we have to bring back a reconsideration. We have to have plans that are substantially different. There's questions of res judicata that arise, and so legalisms are to show up, whereas at this point, and I appreciate what the vice chair had said, that this is something that the applicant has not been contentious on, has kept an open ear, and has been responsive. And so we're just looking for that opportunity in this instance to say, let us continue to be responsive and not to put this in a setting that has a certain legal aspect to it, that it's more process than result.
For folks along the way, he needs five affirmative votes. So just to watch the calculus here. It's not a majority that's required. Chris, maybe just as context here, when would be the next time we could potentially even hear this happen?
All right, Jim. When can you get revised plans?
Well, we're on a two-month schedule now. See, now, it started in March, we ended up in May. We went from May, we're in July. So August, September would be, I would be the target for the year.
Well, we've got October 17th. Oh, you're asking me?
Well, we already have one. Thank you. No, I haven't.
He's counting heads.
I've got it. I know what the vote is. Yes, I do.
So the, the expectation that I, I'm setting is we'll, we could return on October 17th, and you having heard and digested the full scope of the input provided by the board this evening, that we bring this application to a resolution on October 17th.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Holding you to that, Mr. Weber.
What's that?
Holding you to that. There will be a vote on the 17th.
Vote on the 17th, and we extend the time within which the board may consider this matter, and we ask for it carried to the 17th without the need to further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. All right. Do we need a, Chris, you have?
Do we need to move for that? Yes, we need a motion. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
You have one other item of business that you snuck on the agenda?
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, that's a typo, actually.
Is that a typo?
I apologize.
No problem. With that, we are adjourned all the way to Monday, August 1st.